Good evening. This is, first of all, this would have been a regular meeting first of the Planning and Zoning, of the Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission, but the municipal improvement that was proposed for the regular meeting has been withdrawn, and we will not be taking that up at this time. So we now open the public meeting. And before we start, I asked the attorney if I could just make a couple of comments about where we ended the last installment of this application regarding the downtown train station. The first, and Mr. Cohen missed part of our briefing yesterday, so when he left, we were sort of a little bit all over the place still, and we began to reach a consensus, so I'm going to give him, yeah, you're surprised. We began to at least articulate all the questions we wanted to ask you tonight. So I just wanted to recap the last meeting, the feedback we sent to the applicant through staff after the last meeting, and some of the things we talked about yesterday. First of all, sorry. Okay, first of all, the commission is very glad to see a proposal to redo the train station and to make a significant improvement. We very much feel that it is not user-friendly right now, and that it is in sore need of But our first concern in so doing is to make it something that is, a place that is very easy to navigate, and this is the feedback we sent the applicant the last time, that the structure, that the buildings fit the character that we see in Greenwich. And the feedback that we got in developing the current plan of conservation and development, which is in draft right now, was what citizens said, and I'm so, I'm not saying it, they said it, we don't want to look, we don't want to have buildings that would be consistent with White Plains, Stamford, or Portchester. They are all building glass, modern architecture, and we got a very strong message that that's not what people want to see in Greenwich. I know we had positive feedback at the last meeting from the public, but since then, we have received a lot of feedback. I've been stopped countless times on the street to ask me about that glass box. So it has not received a good reception in town. Our third concern is that if possible, the revised train station be a part of downtown's activity and people's ability to enjoy it. So we're, we were looking for a public benefit if it was offered that would be consistent with the scope of this building and this project, and that it really add value in terms of Greenwich's draw. Another thing that we said at the last meeting was that the applicant should not be constrained by our existing regulations, that they should do what worked and what was right, and just propose that, and that we would find a way of addressing, of fixing our regulations so we could build what was right for Greenwich. And the applicant has proposed something like that, and we're going to open with that. So the first thing we're going to do tonight is talk about this concept that the applicant suggested of a transit-oriented development, and we do have some concerns about it, but we generally supported it in our meeting as we discussed it. Then we would very much like to explore the proposed circulation at the site, how drop-off and pickup is going to work, that it be user-friendly, and that it support the growth that is anticipated and the reports that kindly have been provided to us here. As I referenced, we didn't find the architecture proposed directionally consistent with what we are seeking for the town. In architect speak, they think they don't like the massing and the fenestration. I have to look those words up all the time. They mean how big it is, and that they don't like the windows. But you guys all knew that because nobody laughed, but I kept asking them why they couldn't say windows instead of fenestration. Right?
Right.
Okay, so that, that, you're going to hear about that, again, the glass box, and how the theaters laid out, the bulkiness of the theater, the fact that it sits over the parking, all of those were concerns that were raised yesterday, and Nick and Peter Levy are going to be asking some of those questions. Finally, I know we've got somebody from the public who is going to speak about the Performing Arts Center. We were very hopeful that we could get an arts activity. We asked staff to explore it after the last meeting and learned, we actually stumbled across Mr. Ashford's, three years ago, had apparently explored with some of the very players that we reached out to, that staff reached out to, and didn't get any traction with creating a performing arts center. The space not being considered big enough to really be a suitable venue for anything we would like to do. That's very disappointing, but if, so if there's a way that that could happen and go on, we would definitely welcome it. And that's it, that's all I have to say, but I think that recaps it, and now, Mr. Cohen, the floor is yours, at least for a minute.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I apologize for only being able to stay through two and a half hours of your discussion.
We are so much fun, though.
Occasionally, a guy's got to go. But we're here, of course, as you know, to continue the discussion that we began at the July 30 hearing regarding the plans that Greenwich Plaza Inc. has for redeveloping the north side of the railroad station complex. Just as an initial matter, although the MI had originally been put back on the agenda, it's been taken off, as you know, as a result of the withdrawal by the First Selectments Office, and we hope and expect that it will be resubmitted together with a final approval. And I do appreciate, Ms. Alvin, your introductory statement, because it really addresses a number of things that we wanted to say. My comments are introductory only, and the heart of our discussion is going to be presented by our project architect Frank Pyle and John Canning, our project traffic consultant. But I wanted to begin by just noting again that this is a preliminary application, and it's one that's been made purely for the purpose of getting direction from the commission on several key issues that we have to address in order to proceed with, with our application. And again, thanks again, Mrs. Alvin, for addressing a couple of those things, because we need to get direction on our few things. First of all, the basic components of the project. And I heard from your introductory notes that the project as a whole seems to have general approval, or the, the way that the project is moving has general approval. And you like the idea of having a new train station, and we understand the reservations that you have, and will certainly address them. Frank Pyle will talk a little bit about that today, and we've made some modifications to, to address the comments that you had. We understand the architectural issue very well, but again, it's hard to get direction on matters of aesthetics and taste. There are five people facing me, there are more in the public, there's the Architect's Review Committee that will have a variety of thoughts. Our goal was to engage an excellent architect with excellent background and experience in this kind of project, who has a sense of the Greenwich area, having worked on the post office renovation that I think came off very well and has gotten very high grades. But we will, we'll listen to your comments and will, will, will try again to address them. I would like once more to suggest that you also refer this matter to the ARC. I'd asked that at the very first meeting.
No, may I answer that?
Not yet.
Okay.
And, and was told that-
You gave, you gave me my moment in a sense, so I'll let you have yours.
We had thought that, that the commission had agreed to refer it to the ARC. The reason that I suggested that is because we're going to get a variety of additional thoughts, and it would be nice, before we start spending more design money, to see if we could aggregate all of the thoughts. But I leave that in your hands. I think it would be a useful step in helping us with the design process.
The, the concern, the way we saw it yesterday is that we've been so immersed in the POCD process and have such a clear sense of the feedback we're getting from the residents, that we wanted to leave some, that guidance very clear with the applicant before you go to ARC. We would also give that guidance to ARC very clearly, but once your client and we have articulated, gotten to a landing place that everybody seems to be on the same page, then we're comfortable with you going to ARC, and we will also give that guidance to ARC about sticking to, they have the draft of the new POCD, and they know where we're headed. What I was hoping you would do tonight is talk also a little bit, since it's kind of the first item here, about how you're seeing the TOD, the zone, and the change in the regulations, because I think that's really important for how the project is able to go forward. You heard there were some concerns from the commission. After you left, we reached a consensus that we were open to having the TOD. We see it as a plus, that you might be able to get some sort of beneficial finance, that you might be, there might be a benefit, hopefully, to your client as well from it. But we want to talk a little bit about the parameters, if you want to give that a shot, if you're comfortable with going in that direction.
I'd rather not get into the details, but I am very interested in your overall comment, which is that the commission's open to considering some regulatory change to accommodate an acceptable project. We still have on the agenda the, the two changes that we had proposed initially. We've also submitted at the request of the commission a proposed TOD regulation for your consideration. If, if the commission, and this is a direction that we'd like to get, if the commission is inclined toward a TOD approach, we'd be glad to pursue that. Our goal is, is really two things. We need regulatory changes to do the new station in the way that we've designed it, and we need the TOD to create the new south station. We also need it for the cinema. So if, could we do a cinema without those changes? No, we could not. Could we do the railroad stations without those changes? To some extent, yes, we could. So that's the reason that those changes are requested. If the TOD is the direction like, you'd like us to head, glad to do it. As you can see, we spent a lot of time working up what we thought was a pretty good TOD, and we spent time with other examples of TODs with planning organizations, other towns, so it didn't just come out of our head. It's, this work was mostly done by Michelle Cronin, who does a very thorough job of this kind of thing, and we think it's worth pursuing. I think the best way to do it, but obviously it's up to you, is to, is perhaps to charge the staff with working out the detailed issues that would reflect the commission's thoughts.
I think that makes a lot of sense. I already started writing some feedback that we could give staff. We can get that from everybody and funnel it, as we did with staff after you were here last time, very specific thoughts, and then you can explore what other communities have done. We don't even have to apparently call it a TOD, as long as you meet, and Pat, Mr. LaRoe mentioned this to me today, as long as you meet the requirements, there, there are apparently state benefits that accrue to your, that can accrue to your client. I don't know anything about them, but that would be a plus, because it eases the financial burden and allows potentially a better development, so.
I would have to guess that we probably would not be interested in any form of state funding, because there usually are reasons that the state gives you money, but that's, that's without the benefit of any real research.
So I think that's a great plan. We'll funnel the feedback through, through staff, and we'll continue to work it, but we finally did agree directionally. You heard, the key discomfort is we don't want to let all the horses out of the barn at the same time. We don't want it to be too big, we want it to be focused. If we grow the zone later, that's okay, but we want to just make it a first step now. It can always be expanded, it can always be tweaked. For now, to take a conservative, a more conservative approach, and we'll say all that to you.
Well, as you, as you know, we submitted a map showing a proposed overlay area, and so in our, my view, that that's really what we're talking about, that central Greenwich Park. If it's, if the commission decides it wants to narrow it or expand it, that's, we'll be glad to talk to staff about that.
Dave, you had that key concern about the zone, so that works for you, right? Okay.
We'd also like to get a better idea about the commission's feeling on the, on the film theater. As I, can the architecture be modified? I'm sure that if I sat down with Mr. McRae, he would come up with something good, but-
Bring your dictionary.
But so could, so could our architect. I think the issue is whether or not that mass is going to be acceptable, because without that size of a theater, which is small for the kind of theater that at least our theater operator feels is financially viable, without, without that mass, we can't do a theater. Would we do a project with the features that you've seen without a theater? Yes, we would. The message we've received from lots of people in town is that a theater was desirable.
Yes.
And so-
We've heard that a theater, people are telling us a theater is desirable. We've gotten lots of letters. I mentioned that to Mrs. Green. We've heard from people supporting a performing arts center. We've heard from, thank you. We've heard from people supporting, glad to have a venue for the film festival, the French films. There's a lot of support to having an art-film orientation. And again, I translate that to a draw to downtown, something that makes people want to go to Greenwich and catch something great that's happening there. Whether that's a performing arts center, which I'm told is not realistic, or whether it's only the films, I think we're generally in support of anything that makes Greenwich welcoming and interesting.
And the-
Yes? Everybody good with that? Okay, because they asked me to recap, but then you're sort of-
No, this is extremely helpful, this is exactly-
It's a little scary.
What we were all hoping to get from tonight's meeting, and so we, we appreciate it. And then the final major component of the, our plan is, is the park at, at the location that it's at, the intersection of Railroad Avenue and Steve O'Trood.
Mixed feelings on the location. You'll hear from, Mr. Levy and Mr. McRae have comments that sort of summarize where we all came out. We wanted something that was a bigger shot in the arm, if you will, but a park seems okay. Park seems okay?
When you say shot in the arm?
Um, I, you know-
What kind of shot are you talking about?
A part, a performing arts center that has really cool things, that people come to Greenwich to see. Something that's, you know, that would be better for, in, in our minds, there was some consideration that that was better than a park, but a park is okay. Is that, everybody kind of there with that one? Okay.
You know, I've been involved in a couple of performing arts centers, mostly for schools. Greenwich Academy-
Five hundred and thirteen seats.
Has a very nice one. Greenwich Country Day, as you know, just had one approved for their new high school on Sandwich Road. That one is, I believe, something over four hundred seats. Took about 12,000 square feet to do it. It's 70 feet high. And so that's, that's kind of the parameters of what you've got to be thinking about. This is not a performing arts center, and it can't be. And we've spent a lot of time trying to figure out if it could be, and, and the conclusion of, of my client is that it can't. But I'm glad to hear your feeling about the park, and we'll talk some more about that tonight. So if I may, let me introduce Frank Pyle to talk about some of the architectural issues.
Okay, you guys are on now.
Okay?
So, Mr. Pyle, I learned yesterday that Mr. Levy worked for your firm and his early-
I learned that when I was here last time, yes.
Yeah, I hadn't known that.
We were in a different location, we were a smaller office, but many of the same people, perhaps, were, were there at that time. So there's a connection. And I think more than a connection, probably a similar way of thinking as well, so let's hope that we can find some common ground. But my responsibility, and I'm very grateful for the opportunity and for the trust that's been put in me. Frank, Frank Pyle. I'm an architect with Bayer Blinderbell Architects from New York City. Grateful for the responsibility and for the confidence that Bruce and the Ashfords have put in me, and I hope that I can answer some of the questions, and also show how we have, I think, very seriously responded to the comments that we've received and have heard over time, and some of the hard work that we've put into changing the design to try and make what we have work, to keep our vision, but then also to respond to comments that we have received.
Okay.
So I'm going to have to do this strange-
This isn't the part where I said I couldn't tell the differences?
Sorry?
No.
Okay.
You can also take the mic out of there if that's more comfortable for you.
But you have to show him how to do it, because apparently that there you go.
Okay, is that good? Is it working?
Yes.
Okay. The first thing is to talk a little bit about the station building itself. There were concerns about height and its relationship to other buildings in that particular location. So what we've shown here is the building as designed with a 50-foot height above the ground plane. Again, that exceeds the zoning allowance by 10 feet, and the reasons that we have requested that, of course, is because it is the centerpiece of our design, and we'll show that again as we'll get into the, later into the presentation. But what's most important in this section that's taken in the north-south direction, looking east, is its relationship immediately to the adjacent pedestrian overpass over the tracks. It's almost identical in height. It's lower by almost 11 feet than the existing buildings on, oops, I'm sorry, on the south And then just slightly higher than 55 Railroad Avenue to the north, but lower than the mechanical penthouse that sits atop the building by about, I think it's five feet, five to 10 feet. So we think that it fits rather well into that particular context. A building is always about its particular location. It's not excessive, given it's the other buildings that are immediately adjacent to it in its, in its surroundings. There was also some discussion, last time, about the possibility of taking advantage of some possible views through the buildings to the south, through the existing buildings. So what we did was, we took a couple of photographs in order to examine the reality of what those views might be, to understand what the result would be if we went to the effort of creating some kind of a gathering place, a restaurant, a bar perhaps, or even a, something as simple as a viewing observation platform on the roof of the building. So the photograph on the left is a view from the existing station, looking south through the two existing buildings on the south side of the property. This view is approximately 25 feet above the grade plane, and you can see that there is really, there's, there's absolutely no view through. This is also the view that would exist if we were to create a floor at approximately this level. That's about, the second floor, if we were to create one, would be at about, approximately that same height, 25 feet. The view from the photograph on this, on the right-hand side, we took across the street here, on the top of this mechanical penthouse that I mentioned a moment ago. So this, this next photograph is a view looking directly through and across in this direction. And you can, oops, I'm sorry. You can see that even here, the view is obscured by trees, it's only the slightest hint, and that is really taken from the height of what that roof would be of the building. So in order to make these significant changes, to create a place that would be as high on the, on the building, would really result in not a very satisfactory view. These are two sections. The first on the top is the existing, is the design as we submitted it. What we did in response to comments that the cinema building was large, albeit as of right, I have to emphasize, is to try to study some ways that we might both physically and then in terms of appearance, reduce the height of the building. But we had to do that very carefully, because first of all, there was, we can't just, it wasn't as simple as dropping the second floor slab height, because we have existing retail underneath and parking, we couldn't get any lower. So we worked very carefully with bowtie to understand what they needed, their absolute minimums for the operations of their theaters, and we were able to lower the building physically, lower the roof in two locations. First, here, in the lobby and concessions area, we dropped it five feet. And we did the same on the western side as well of the stair tower. You'll also see in just a moment, we'll show you some renderings. We were able to, through a, I think, a very clever manipulation and change of material, reduce the physical appearance of the building and the way it's perceived, so it actually feels a lot lower. So here is a view of the cinema as we submitted it previously in July. The next view is how we were able to make the changes reflected in the section that I just explained. Those changes are a drop in five feet of the lobby and concession area. We added in that area significant additional glazing so that activity can be perceived and experienced behind. At night, it will light up, it will seem, it reduces the proportion of masonry to glass, so it seems a lot lighter than it did previously. We had to keep the height of the building as it existed, because we were not able to lower it for, or bowtie was not able to lower it. It's, it's the minimum height that they had for the size of their theaters. Their projection equipment is all very carefully coordinated in this height, and in order for them to get the appropriate rakes, they call it, for, that is, the, the grades for the chairs and seating, and for the projection views, they needed the full height of the building. But what we did was, along that line where we dropped it five feet, we changed the material to a lighter metal panel, which is very similar in relationship to the zinc that we've proposed for the exterior of the train station. So this line here is now what you perceive, and then above feels, will be more reflective. This is just a very simple sort of design rendering, but what would happen is it will actually pick up a lot of the reflection of the light at night or during the day, and this will appear much, much lighter and lower. So here, again, the change from previously submitted to what we're proposing now. Similarly, the view from the corner of Art Street and Railroad, this is actually looking to the southwest, east, sorry, east, is the building as submitted previously in July. Again, the, and this is really very tricky here, let me go back, but then with the changes made, as, as were shown, here, we've dropped the stair tower five feet, because we didn't need the extra height above. We've carried that line of masonry all the way across at the same five-foot height that we dropped, and then the roof of the actual theater volumes above has been clad in- we dropped, and then the roof of the actual theater volumes above has been clad in that same lighter metal panel material. Again, we think, pretty significantly reducing the perceived mass of that, of that building. I also want to mention while I am looking at this view, over the weekend, I dropped my daughter off in college and revisited a performing arts center that I worked on at the very beginning of my career for a firm that specialized in them, Hardy-Holzman-Pfeiffer. Mr. Levy may be familiar with that firm. No longer exists, Hugh Hardy passed away unfortunately recently, but they were leaders in the design of performing arts centers and did many, many, many dozens during, over thirty years. This one was in Eugene, Oregon, but what it emphasized to me was the size and the placement on the site. This site is just simply too narrow in order to fit the kind of volume you would need, not only for the seats, but then the height as well for the fly area, for all of the backup house spaces, the operational needs, would never really successfully fit onto a site of this, of these proportions. More significantly, though, in talking with a very interesting guy who was the operations manager of the building, when we visited on a Friday afternoon at three o'clock, it was empty. They had to unlock the building and let us look in. He says, however, when a show comes through, which is periodic, every other couple of weeks they get a big show, it's madhouse, it's madness. So what that means is that you have very peak times of people parking, people arriving, they're all arriving at the same time, they're all leaving at the same time for a show. It's a very different personality and character than what's been proposed here for these theaters. One of the matters that Darrell Harvey has explained in previous presentations is that the way that the theaters are scheduled in the Bowtie multiplex is that they're staggered, so that you have people arriving and departing at different times, and those numbers can be more easily managed, so that there is a more even flow of arrival and departure, rather than the character of a performing arts center, where you would have many numbers of people arriving for the curtain, and then those same numbers of people leaving at the same time, and then long periods when there would be no activity. This is a view of the south side of the theater volume and of the station to the right, taken from the platform on the south bound, on the south side. And this is that same view with the roof level dropped to the five-foot level, with the change in material above. We also addressed some comments and concerns about the actual activity going on within the station building itself. There were requests for more information, so we've added some digital information boards that will provide train arrival and departure information. There's also the opportunity for digital information on information boards that would perhaps have current events, weather-related or activities going on in the town. It's hard to see in the rendering because it's small, but there are signs here, sorry, once again, for the location of the two elevators that go up to platform level, and then are double-sided, so they also go up another extra half level to the floor level of the cinema above. The location of the building has also been discussed, and I understand we'll hear some more comments and thoughts about it. For me, as an architect, I've always thought that since this building is the iconic visual representation, sort of the centerpiece, the keystone, if you will, of this architectural composition, it makes sense to be located exactly where it is. It's evenly balanced, it services, of course, the theater above as kind of a pre-lobby, if you will. Not only does it serve as a civic space in and of itself, but allows people to gather and then make their way up to the cinema where there's queuing and ticketing and so forth, and then also, of course, provides access to the retail spaces below, and then up the stairs to the train platforms. So, we'll hear other comments from John Canning about its location in terms of operations and pickup and drop-off, but for me, as an architect, and then also as a planner, as a transportation planner, it makes perfect sense that it be located in the center, so that there's an even distance between its, the place people get onto the platforms from an east and westerly direction. There was also some questions about the use of the space and the relative sizes of the new building versus the existing. We prepared these plans to show that, and they're, they're scaled, so that they're at the same scale, and we've outlined in yellow the actual public area on each of the ground floors, here and here, and also the mezzanine levels above. And what you can tell immediately from these graphics is that the sizes really are not that different. What we have done, though, is to use the space in a much better and more efficient way. We've taken space that was storage, or backup house, or other usage for maintenance, and we've brought it into the public realm and made it more accessible. So we think it's a simpler, more efficient building, one that does not, is really not as large as it appears, the footprint really is not significantly different. And again, the square footage is very similar, but it uses the space, we think, in a much more efficient and gracious way, giving much more of it to public use. And that's our immediate response. I know there are other thoughts and comments, so I thought I would keep my responses brief, and then perhaps leave it open for however you want to- ... address the discussions or further comment or thoughts.
Mr. Pyle, if you can go back to the street section, please.
Which, which, I'm sorry? Yes, the section, sure.
I'm in agreement with you on the, the center of the station in the street. It's interesting, actually, I think I asked a commuter, they would actually, they would go through the, through a station or whatever, they walk up to the platform, actually go to one end of the platform, because at the far end, when they get off the train, they want to be first up the ramp at Grand Central. Kind of, same kind of thing, it's, it's kind of strange how that works, but it is what it is. One of the things that I think we had been discussing is, we're looking at a situation where we have a similar building to what's out there now. First floor retail along the sidewalk, the center station, and then to one side is the amassing of the theaters. What struck me, looking at this drawing, and then actually looking at the numbers, is that we're creating a center in the street. We're creating a center in the street with a drop-off and pickup, with the work that John Canning has done, but we're getting what's, seems to be a lopsided building. My thought was, could you take half of the theaters from the west side and mirror them over to the east side to center up that mass? So, akin to what's happening on Steamboat Road, you have the garden, the building, now taller mass, the center of the station, the taller mass, the lower parking, and then garden. I think what struck me the most was, I'm looking at a figure here from Arch Street, that the height of the building is fifty feet, but it starts thirty-five, thirty feet off of Arch Street. So at that end, I'm actually looking up at something that's quite tall. And my thought was, if we could move that back towards the center of the street, where we have the tall buildings, as you already mentioned, we could really make something happen with the approaches on Steamboat and Arch Street, which are pretty much the gateways to Greenwich. I think in this, understanding that, to address the programming, that way, the station, which is basically the portal from the street to the platform, can now actually double as the lobby in both directions for the movie theater. And it could be used constantly, and that, instead of it actually just run through upstairs to the platform, you can go through and actually to a lobby on the second floor of this tall structure that you have for the station, and go in both directions to the six theaters, through on each side. In reflecting on the street, we're, we're talking about actually the heights, and I think it actually brings all of the height and the mass to the center, where all the height and mass is. I think it actually, would actually open up the vistas coming down Greenwich Avenue and at Arch Street. Give it a little bit more light and air in that area. I think it's, it's something that probably could be easily addressed or looked at and explored. To actually start, you've got something happening on the east, the east side, let's take a look, and can we do the same thing on the west side? I understand your thoughts on the, the height and actually replacing it with a panel system to bring the perceived height down. I do appreciate what's happening in the newest design, actually, where you've lowered it five feet as it comes to the railroad, or to the, to the main station. I think it actually now makes the station give its presence, its importance on the street. If you do, and mirror it over, doing the same kind of thing, so really, again, reinforcing that center. But I think that's the thing that needs to be the vibrant and lit element. I, I don't believe that the panelized system is successful to actually bringing the perceived height down. I think you'll always still kind of see that edge, the perception of that edge is the height.
And if, if I could give you the layman's comment on this? I spent a good fifteen minutes comparing the two, and it took me a really long time to figure out what exactly had been the change, so that it, it's hard, because, yeah, I know, I see it now, but it took me a while to register it, because there's something about, about the brick that just, it, I don't, I agree with Mr. McRiot, reduces, it doesn't do much to reduce the massing. The other thing, just to add to that, the commission in general liked Mr. McRiot's idea, and that's why we're sharing it with you. We shared it at the last meeting, and everybody supported this concept of trying to use the station itself to keep it active when it's not active for commuters. I didn't see you really address that in your responses, I, did I miss that?
I don't recall that that was a question. I do recall it was discussed. I know that there was some internal discussion, just-
And we talked about it at the last meeting, because I went back and looked, but in any event, his idea has support because it balances. There is a logistical question it raised, which is, we're aware of that there's the parking over there on the west side.
Yes.
And how would you manage that? Because the parking is necessary, those retail locations use it, and how do you balance that? And we, we discussed it a long time and didn't get to an answer on that. Peter Lowe, you wanted to say something?
I would reinforce what you said, there were at least a couple of us, particularly from the perspective, the other perspective, at the far right-hand corner, that perspective, we've got a slide on that. Yes. So, now if you shift to that one back and forth-
The red button.
Oh, you've never had the work before.
That's right, you've never had the pleasure.
That's all right, can you hear me?
He's never had a working sound system.
I, I had the same experience, opening these renderings back and forth, as Margarita did. And in subsequent conversation among commission members, it was felt that that did not appreciably help the massing concern. And massing, it's not necessarily mean exterior bulk, but it's, it's just what, how it's perceived. The other perspective you just had up there is more, is mitigated. This is, even with the change in materials and that white block on top of the roof there, it's still, it's still what it is. And I think that's a, a big concern. And one of the advantages of Mr. McRiot's suggestion is that, from this perspective, and from looking at it straight on, the whole structure, it reduces all this massing in general, but particularly from this angle.
Let me just jump in and say that we did look at that idea. I think we briefly considered it, and we discussed it with Bowtie. And what you end up, very simply, is with, is two buildings. People will be buying their tickets in one location. It would obligate Bowtie to then be running two theaters essentially, instead of one. You would be forcing people, for example, to buy tickets in, at the queuing and in the concession area, but then they would have to walk, you know, through the building, through the lobby, back to the other cinemas.
There's a very successful movie theater in Portchester. Yes, there's a very successful movie theater in Portchester that everybody from Greenwich sneaks to, and it, that's how it works. You go into their big lobby, and then there's wings. I believe that the one in Norwalk works the same way, you go into a big lobby and the theaters are off on the sides. That's what we're suggesting to you. The theaters come off-
Then, then the station becomes the lobby itself.
You've got it. That's the concept. We want the station to be active all the time, to be a draw for people, so it's not just a place to commune. Hi.
Darrell Harvey from Ashforce.
Hello, Mr. Harvey.
Hello.
Do you need, you're good on that, right?
Yep, thank you. Bowtie is not here tonight, but I'm quite confident I can answer for them, and I could confirm it, get back to the commission. The, the, the theaters in Portchester are different than what they're proposing here. This is also serving food and bringing it to seats in the, in the theaters themselves. There'd be a kitchen just on the other side of that reception area, where it says cinema down there, is where they would have a kitchen, to have to be serving people by going back and forth through the station to a whole nother location. I just know it would not be practical for this type of setup, if there were no food being delivered and, and beverages and everything, which is a key part of the whole operation. Maybe there's some way of having a ticket taker in the center and then being able to deliver-
I understand your, I understand that, that-
The concept I-
That concept.
I could confect with. By the way, symmetrically, I understand exactly what you're trying to accomplish. And the one other comment I was gonna make in our design was, one of the ideas of having the mass at that end was its location on Arch Street and opposite the car dealerships and so forth, as opposed to closer to Greenwich Avenue, where the retail is and so forth. But I understand the symmetry, I just think practically, and I can check with them, but I don't want to spend too much time on it, because I think practically, they'd say it's a good idea.
Mr. Harvey, I think actually, the thing that we need to consider is not, I'm gonna be kind of blunt about this, I don't, I don't want to consider tenant requirements in a building, specifically a building as monumental-
Right.
-and as central to the town of Greenwich. And if that's, if a tenant requirement is forcing me to make decisions or changes to such a building, then I think I'm kind of letting a lot of people down. Because to me, I'm going to be living with this building for a very long time. Just to say is that maybe that business isn't going to be around after. So, my suggestion is actually, they need to actually take a look at what's going on, and we need to have a good conversation about their requirements, because if it's something they can't compromise on, we'll have to have a longer discussion about this project. Okay?
I'd like to comment a little bit further on-
About the theaters.
I just wanted to comment, I don't think it's a compromise. I think that Mr. Pyle is particularly talented, he's done a really quite beautiful job of, programmatically, but there, but I think that it is not a stretch. In fact, it's just a design problem of how to separate the two functions in one space, and in this case, the train station is on the second floor, and the, considering what Mr. McRiot said, the lobby for the six theaters would be on the first floor. So, you can simply separate the two functions, they're just sharing a space. I don't think that's a stretch, I think it's, it can, it is doable, and I've seen it done before. I think it's, uh, it can, it is doable and I've seen it done before. So I'm confident it can be done. There are other things to consider and that is, um, the streetscape and how it addresses it. One of the things that, um, is very nice about, um, a, a transportation center is when you have, um, uh, spaces, gathering spaces that allow you to access not only the station, but the program around it. So usually that means that if you have a little plaza outside, a drop-off area, a loggia that organizes traffic, not only up through it, but across it, so that you can access programs horizontally as well as going up through it vertically. Uh, it could be a much richer program. And by creating so, uh, an, an element like a loggia, you're actually enriching the streetscape view of it and allowing a lot more to happen programmatically. One of the things is that you, this is, uh, this, uh, scheme is limited in its permeability because you're not using certain, um, elements like a loggia to allow, um, uh, access to the entire scheme, um, either internally or externally. You only can oper, you're only accessing things from the curb. And you have a, uh, you have a, uh, a plaza which is a wonderful opportunity to integrate with the entire scheme, um, but it's really out on its own and it's its own element, which is fine, but it could be much more integrated into the entire building and, and a, really a drop-off point, um, and a, um, important, um, theater, not only up to, uh, Greenwich Avenue, but into the station, into the retail, into the theaters, um, depending on how you want to organize the scheme.
One of the things we had talked about, uh, at the briefing was, um, looking at archetypal train stations. Actually, Grand Central came up where you had the, uh, the platforms, the tracks, but preceding that was a, a grand space. I think you had talked about a plaza, the, the, um, Grand Central Terminal itself, those kind of things, Union Station, so on and so forth. And I think it, the situation that we're seeing here is we have that plaza type thing, but it seems that actually it's just the pass-through and there's really nothing that's happening around it that you can get engaged to. The thought about, uh, passing through or using the front door to get into the retail side to side was thought about yesterday. The idea of actually, right now, your program has the lobby for the theaters off of the mezzanine, a kind of a mezzanine level, correct?
Yes.
Okay. That, right. So you're passing through still to the platform, but you can pass through up to the, to the mezzanine to go to one side. Um, I think one of the thoughts we were tossing around was actually if that mezzanine went from side to side inside the central volume, that way you can connect both sides of the building for one area, so.
Can I, I just answer quickly because there are about five questions in there. The, on the, on the theater issue, I understand exactly what you're talking about in architectural design.
Mm-hmm.
But we, if, if we're going to have, if an objective is to preserve the theaters in Greenwich, we have to provide a viable structure for the theaters.
Oh, yeah.
So it, it could easily come down to a choice. Do you want to save the theaters or do you, do you want to have, it wouldn't be the structure you want because we wouldn't build it if it didn't work for the theaters, for theaters because it wouldn't work. You'd have to use it for something else. So we would not do, uh, the theaters. I could confirm that, uh, with Bowtie. But that's, that's been one of the premises from the beginning that, uh, we've designed this so it could be viable for them as a, as a boutique, uh, theater. So that's, that's a choice. I don't know what the regulations provide in terms of what you're allowed to build or not allowed to build, if it says right and all that sort of stuff. But our goal would be to have a viable theater there. We can't, we can't build something that doesn't work for them. And so we need the input from you as, as to, uh, which is more important, that the, that we preserve, that do the best we can to make a, uh, a structure that fits, is viable for theaters or not have, not have the theaters there at all and do, and do something else. You could give us that, uh, direction, but we, we can't solve conflicting objectives.
Yeah, but.
Guess what I'm saying? I was just going to address that.
I guess we're missing a data element in that, which is whether or not Bowtie would buy into having a lobby that splits the theaters rather than doing.
And I can, and I will confirm, I'm saying, I'm trying to speak for them to save it.
So we're missing that data point, so we're speculating right now, but.
I, I don't think it's a speculation. I think that you have a corridor which goes six theaters long. I think that's not such a good design from that point of view. You could have corridors that only go three, three theaters long. So there's much to be said for any, you know, there's, there's trade-offs everywhere.
I'm, I'm, it is speculating that they're not here. I was just trying to save the commission a little time because we had talked with them about splitting theaters. And one time I talked about splitting one theater off for another reason. That was creating a problem under the new, and maybe you've been to them, under the new structure where you're providing food and a kitchen and serving, it's very different than, uh, old-fashioned, uh, str, uh, movie setup. So I was just sharing that with you, but I'm absolutely, I'll, I'll be able to confirm this hopefully as quickly as possible and I'd be the first to admit, if they say that's great, we'd love to have the theater straight, it's, it works great, be the first to, uh, to let you know, but I was just trying to share that with you and I'll let you get back. And I'm, I'm not, I'm not a theater operator. I've been dealing with theaters for a long time and researched these extensively, but I'm also not our architect to talk about the logges and all that thing.
Okay.
Um, Peter Levy.
Oh, okay.
Um, Mr. Creel?
Okay.
Um, Mr. Hardman wants to say something?
Sure.
Peter Levy?
Our, our discussion in large parts focused around the, the bulk, uh, perception of the theater building. If there were no parking in the current location in your proposal, could the entire theater part of the development be lowered, uh, by ten or fifteen feet and create an entirely different streetscape? I'm not asking you to solve the parking issue, I'm just asking if that's something that was considered in your conceptual design.
Parking's always been a key component because it's required. You know, we were meeting minimum numbers, uh, in order to service, uh, the, the cinemas and retail and, and other.
The retail we were concerned about.
Turn your mic on.
I'm sorry. I'm just not used to having a working system. Um, we, and we understand that with the retail. Those fifty-two spaces I know are occupied a great deal of the time, um, and we're aware that the retail spaces there use them. On the other hand, the way Mr. Cohen wrote the TOD, um, he was proposing that we reduce parking requirements. So it's a question of balancing the priorities and, um.
I can't, what I could say is that it would be a very different design.
Well, I can also tell you something else, which is.
If the parking were.
Which is that we are chronically short of parking passes in Greenwich. So, and especially since we have that temporary fire station that doesn't want to be temporary taking up a part of one of our parking lots. So definitely station parking is at a premium and it's a, I'm, it's a trade-off I'm concerned about because I don't want to, I don't want to damage the retailers in the area. On the other hand, you heard the two architects that they really feel it could make a difference and Mr. Hardman as well to remove that parking structure underneath. So I, just throwing it out there.
I can't speak to what requirements or what sorts of variances or concessions would need to be made in order to do that. It would certainly result in a very different study and a different design and perhaps a different arrangement, programmatic arrangement.
I can tell you that the town planner is not here tonight and her jaw went a little slack when it was mentioned. So I know she had some concerns as well about us going short on parking. So, okay.
Uh, Mr. Pyle, if you can go to, um, the Arch Street rendering.
Um.
Uh, current design, please.
Hold on.
Um.
When Peter's ready.
When looking at this, what I, what I found is the, the solution with the panelized, uh, parapet, uh, what I was, what I was looking at is like, it was the screen for the mechanical systems up there. Um, I'm thinking, we're talking about height in this area, um, and looking at the building and what you've done with the, the glass there in the corner. Uh, one of the things they had come up with our discussion is, uh, looking at, uh, what is the building saying to us in terms of the actual design? Um, a lot of people saw the, the renderings, they were published all over the place. Uh, I think we got a lot of mixed response between it's too modern, it's great, I love it, I hate it. Um, one of the things we were discussing is trying to create a balance between your program requirements and an aesthetic that actually would fit to Greenwich. One of the things that we were talking about is actually trying to incorporate some more traditional detailing into the building. Um, your, uh, use of brick is appreciated, um, but could we actually do some, uh, detailed exploration of corbeling, uh, window drum, uh, jam, uh, treatments? Um, again, getting back to actually if, if that, uh, upper area was brick again, could we do something at, at roof edge, um, uh, to, again, now getting back to this, reinforce that because maybe we can get the mass on the other side. Um, one of the things that, uh, I don't think we talked about, talked about yesterday is actually the screen that covers the garage, um, is, uh, a separate material, um, and that maybe we can explore actually using the brick there as well, uh, instead of, I guess it was cast concrete.
It's cast concrete, yes.
Okay.
And it's, it's open, it's fifty percent open for.
I, I understand. Right. Um, that way it doesn't look like a garage. To me, if we use the same materials, it, it would look like an extension of the rest of the building as opposed to the building kind of jutting out over, over top. The, um, if you can go to the train, that railroad track view, the backside.
Oh. We may have locked you out because, um, Mr. Levy had some photos that he wanted to discuss. So we may have momentarily locked you out. We thought it might be a good moment. No?
I hope not. It was my train thought.
We're getting there. Oh, you're going back to?
Ah, perfect.
Okay.
Um, at an A R C meeting about a thousand years ago, we were talking about a project, um, along the railroad and one of the members actually mentioned something that stuck, has stuck with me for a long time is that a, a lot of what people perceive of Greenwich is what they see from the train. This is the gateway to Greenwich proper. Question, would, the first question is, the, um, the roofs there, that we are seeing those structures, is that, that's the existing to re, be retained or is that something new?
I'm sorry, of the, of the built, the new buildings?
Yes.
Oh, you mean the canopies?
The canopies, yeah.
Those are the, uh, Metro North, uh, conduct to canopies.
Okay.
We're hoping those would be improved, but if they are, they would still be in a similar location.
Um, disregarding who owns what, who's responsible for what, I think one of the most important things to, to keep in mind is we have a street presence on Railroad Avenue. We have the drop-off pickup at the new station on the south side, but we need to look at this as well, um, as the inviting area as well. There's something else that has to happen here as well. Um, and I think in keeping with your design ideas, could those canopies be reconfigured, redesigned to keep into, to actually integrate them into the new designs? Could the back of the, um, the back of the lobby, uh, the new lobby, uh, how do we kind of address that so it's actually, instead of it being behind the canopies, it engulfs the panopies or works with the canopies? So you're actually drawn to those doors, uh, when you get off the train or come out of the train. Um, one of the things actually Mr. Levy and I were talking about is actually trying to create some kind of a, uh, a glass canopy or something across, um, all of the, uh, the tracks. Um, that was kind of pie in the sky, but it was, it was something that we were thinking being built, tie it all together. So the south side, the north side, the canopies, the lobbies all really kind of worked. So as the train pulled up, you were actually, you were coming into the station. Um, uh, you know, this is the Greenwich station, it's all one thing. Uh, I think actually, uh, probably one of the biggest things is the, the signage as well. You know, welcome to Greenwich, here we are. Um, I know there may be constraints with the, uh, the railroad itself, but I believe that's something that's, uh, important to explore and get to, so. Understanding that, uh, we have movie theaters, I think you have done this already, is actually incorporating their marquee into, uh, the design.
Conceptually, yes.
Okay.
We provided some.
I think that's a significant element as well as all of the signage for the retail. Um, because I think it's, uh, what, what I'm always frightened of, um, is the design professional spends hours, the client spends lots of money and then tenant comes in and does a terrible job of signage.
Okay, go back to the, go back to the.
So I think actually, uh, understanding of that is actually to make sure that that's part of the elements of things to ma, make it successful, specifically that, that marquee because, um, if these are movie theaters, that thing's going to be significant. It's probably going to be lit and flashing and moving all the time and we want to make sure that that's correct, so.
We understand that there, there actually are guidelines that would follow specifically, yes.
As part of the, the landscape, is that still under your purview or is that a different team?
It's, uh, Eric Rains, who, who is a part of our team.
When we talk, I think that's, Mr. Levy had several comments yesterday on the park and that's really where you're hitting the design. So we could do the station and the theater and big concepts on that and then we'll go to the park.
Okay, let me talk a little bit about theater.
Well, okay. Because we've got those, you know what? I've got that, the, the station you like, ready to go? Do you want to talk about it?
No, I didn't finish.
Okay. Sorry, Patrick.
We came, we came to that realization that this site cannot handle a full-blown Broadway-type theater. Um, I work a lot in theaters.
When I can.
And, uh, it's a situation where you have the house, you have the stage, you have the back of house, you have wings, you have a fly. It's a large space. One of the things that we thought about and actually I think the town planner came up of something in between where you could actually have on Monday a, a film and on Tuesday, if there, there's a stage, so it could be a comedy night. And on Friday night, you know, we could get the Tokyo string quartet to play.
We asked for that at the last meeting.
I understand that.
And Mr. Harvey said no.
I understand that.
Okay.
Um, and I think it's, it's actually looking at flexible space in the programming. Do all six theaters need to be true theaters? Could one of them have a stage and be available for something in between, if you know what I mean? Um, I think actually looking at actually the theater, yes, the way it's set up, you've got the projection, you've got the screen, you've got the seats in between. Could it be turned sideways so instead of actually being trained to street, could it be sideways east to west and then give you a little bit more depth, so.
Okay.
But I think that's actually something we were thinking about yesterday, not a full-blown theater. That's not possible. We recognize that thought. Mr. Levy?
Okay. All right.
I, I don't know if I should respond to.
No, no, don't say.
I'll just listen.
Don't say anything yet.
I'm in listening mode at this point, so.
So.
I hope somebody's taking notes.
I know there are people from the public that want to speak, but the problem is that we've got to get to this issue of.
But I think that's actually something we were thinking about yesterday, not a full-blown theater, that's not possible, we recognize that thought.
Okay. All right.
I, I don't know if I should respond to-
No, no, don't say-
I'll just listen.
Don't say anything yet.
I'm in listening mode at this point, so.
So-
I hope somebody's taking notes.
I know there are people from the public that want to speak, but the problem is that we've got to get to this issue of what it looks like for Greenwich overall, and we've got to work this problem, and it's going to take a while, and I apologize for that, but we do have to resolve this and we've got to get it, and we're trying to be as concise as we can. All right, Patrick, let's see how good you are at technology. There we go, okay. Peter?
Okay. This is the classic triumphal barrel arch that is a great organizer. And it allows for, it organizes pedestrian and train traffic going in many different directions. The, this-
We have more pictures if you want to-
Okay, well, let's go through-
Keep going. I only found four online, Peter tried to send them to me last night.
Well, let's just start with this, so you can see on the exterior how this, these triumphal arches carried through, the barrel goes all the way through the station. There is a loggia in front which organizes all the traffic coming through. That allows people to permeate through the station in many different directions. And it's a massive building, but it's made quite ephemeral and sweet and light pours in because this tremendous mass has these, has these vast arches that allow the sun to get through. And so it's a massive building, but it seems very light. I'm not, I-
And then there's one more.
Now, the architecture that you presented is a, does something very similar to this, it brings light into the scheme. But this is a little bit richer because it does a lot of more things. There's a plaza in front, there's a-
Maybe one more?
There's a loggia.
This one.
No, that's okay, just, you don't have to, keep on changing. There's a loggia which organizes the, how people enter the building. And the variation of the, of the plan of this, of this station is much more massive and therefore needs to do much more than the Greenwich station. But nonetheless, this very, these, it's a very simple concept to create these kinds of spaces, exterior, transitional, and interior, in order to create a truly successful transit station. You can, there, so the scheme that we have does not fully incorporate how to drop people off and how to gather people before they go into the station. And the more we can do with that, it just makes the scheme better. The building could be brought further out onto the street, it doesn't have to align with the building. And it could create a, the building itself could be overhang the sidewalk and create a very welcoming space. Could go, it could even go further out, creating a nice canopy when people are being dropped off. Something that is truly commands its space and welcomes you. The way that it's presented is really giving us exactly what we have, and we're looking for something which is a little bolder. The, I think that we talked plenty about the idea of bifurcating the program so that it's more symmetrical, but more importantly, the organizing idea of having some kind of horizontal spine, enfilade, some kind of loggia that allows circulation between all the different pieces of this, the retail, the cinema, and the station would be a very enriching thing to do so that you can be, go from the curb into a loggia or even an interior kind of spine that connects everything. Would bring a lot more opportunities for people to experience the entire scheme and could make it, can enrich the program. The, the park is, there's always, it's always nice to have another park. The corner next to, next to the Greenwich Avenue-
Steamboat Road, sorry.
The Steamboat- Is a very urban space, and some of the best urban parks that I know, which are similar size, have done a very good job of having the greenscape of it really define the space. And a lay of trees, a march of benches, water element, not a waterfall, waterfalls are problematic, I think, but a gathering space, a waterfall is not a gathering space, but some kind of fountain or some kind of water element that people can participate in, which is very common these days, is a great opportunity to gather things that bring you together. So usually the water needs to be more centralized or more, more kind of the axially important than just being a waterfall. And the others, the west side of the scheme presents a very interesting issue with just bulk. And that can be done by, just like the facade of King's Cross Station, it can be very massive, but you can, you can have a kind of a, a much larger idea of bays that are open and defined and break up the mass and not separate a, this very long mass into kind of two horizontal bands that have little to do with each other. They can, this thing can be two stories high and come all the way to the ground and have, and you could have a great, a lay of columns or something of that sort, something very simple and traditional, which is very understandable. The, the parking is unfortunately in the same place as it is now, and if it were put at a lower level, which I guess would be underground, it's a very expensive endeavor, but it would solve a lot of problems. You would, you would be able to open up the scheme a little bit more. And it would, it would help with the height of the, of the overall scheme. And creating a little park at the other end is a nice idea, but it just needs to be integrated into something. If, if you wanted to keep all of the cinema programming at one end, you could have, use that other end as the plaza to enter the cinema. And have, have it kind of exist on its own, it doesn't have to be accessed through the central station idea. And have it, let it have its own presence and have it, have its own billboard off at the end, which would clarify the use, I think, a little bit more. And it would be closer to parking. So there's a lot of programmatically things that could be changed and tweaked and a lot of different devices that could be used to enrich the scheme. And I think that we're looking for something a little bolder than what you've presented, which is program, which is very consistent with what's there. We're looking for something a little bit more.
Okay. Okay. I guess, I think Mr. Levy has given his comments.
Are you ready?
Are you ready to hear from John Canning?
Let me ask you a question, we have people who would like to talk about the theater, who are in the public. And could we take a break and hear from them, because they want to say their thing and go, I believe? Is that all right?
It's your meeting, Ms. Alvin.
Okay.
Madam Chair, before we move on, I think actually my thoughts were something to give back its sense of direction. My thoughts were actually things for you to think about, explore. My anticipation was actually you would go back, take a look at this stuff, and then come back to us with that.
We understand.
And the feedback we gave you and that you picked up on in your letter about consistency with downtown architecture, I got to be careful how I say this because we don't want it to look like Disneyland, but it's to incorporate elements that are 19th and 20th century, early 20th, late 19th, and that was what-
See now, you've got to be kind of careful, because we took careful notes of what Mr. McRae had to say about-
And that's what they-
Detailing, and we understand-
Okay.
I think we understand what he's getting at.
But what Mr. Levy just showed you-
Was King's Cross in London.
Right, we could, yeah, was King's Cross, but again, what's the year, 1870?
It's nice.
And, but again, it's got, it's got those elements of the late 19th century that we mentioned the last time. I think you can incorporate what Mr. McRae was saying, but at the same time pick up on the suggestion Mr. Levy is making of something that is more reflective of the primary architectural period downtown. Also picks up on some of the Lexus, that old Lexus building has that same kind of arched, reflects that kind of arched approach. And Mr. Levy had been looking at that. I think they are saying consistent things, what Mr. McRae suggested and what Mr. Levy showed us with King's Cross are not inconsistent, and we'd like you to keep both of those sets of comments in mind.
We shall.
Okay. You okay with letting the public speak for, on the theater issue, and then we'll move on to-
Sure.
Because you know for the public, the traffic and drop-off are not immensely interesting until they can't get out of their cars and get into the station.
Well, in some way, in a lot, lot of ways, it does integrate with the building design and the access to the building and to the train station. And so the public will be interested in everything, I'm sure, but-
Okay, so I've got some people from the public who wish to speak, Mrs. Green has been twitching in her seat, so I will ask her to speak first.
It's Adele Green, it's not Mrs.
It's just something that we do to keep ourselves courteous here.
I know. So, good evening, everybody.
Would you just give your name?
This way, yeah.
Pull the mic down, and then if you would spell your name?
Is this good?
Yeah, that's good, but if you would spell your name for the court reporter.
Okay, Adele, like the singer, A-D-E-L-E, Green with an E on the end.
Get out much.
You know the singer Adele. So, good evening, everybody, I'm Adele Green, and I produce the Greenwich Classic Film Series at the Bowtie Movie Theater on Railroad Avenue. And I'm here to propose that if, instead of demolishing the Bowtie Movie Theater, you transform it into a performing arts center for the town of Greenwich. But first, let me tell you a little about my program. This is our 60th year, season, 60th season showing classic films, Marilyn Monroe, Marlon Brando, Cary Grant, those kind of movies, with live film critics and film historians who speak at each of the screenings. There's a six-film series in the fall and another six-film series in the spring. We have over 400 people who attend the program on Monday night, and at one point, we had expanded the program to two nights a week, Mondays and Tuesdays, and we're well on our way to a thousand people. That is a huge audience. When I read about the $45 million renovation plan, which included the demolition of Bowtie Theater, I realized my program would be over. But I attended the zoning and development meeting right after the plan was announced, and I heard Margarita Albin say, "It was always a dream of hers to have a theater in Greenwich." The next morning, I woke up with an idea, which was, hey, let's make a performing arts center, we can do this. Let me tell you about this theater, which was why I was so thrilled to find it in the first place, and to run this classic film series there, and why I think it would be perfect for a performing arts theater. It's a unique theater, it has 437 seats, it has a huge screen, and the way the theater is built is perfect for film.
Mr. Cohen, Mr. Cohen, they're having trouble hearing Ms. Green. Thank you.
So where are we? So, the theater-
Four hundred and fifty-three seats.
Fifty, 437 seats. And it is built perfectly for film, but also for any kind of performance, there's not a bad seat in the house. You enter the theater at a higher level, and then it slopes down to your seats. Therefore, you look up at the screen, which is how movies should be seen, larger than life, that's what the movies are all about. And for us, we know that these classic films can be seen on your TV or computer screens at home, so to see them on this giant screen is very important. And of course, our speakers live and in person is something you can't get in your living room. But if you think about other theatrical experiences you have had, plays, dance, orchestras, that is how those theaters are built as well. You walk down to your seats and then look up at the performance, and a large seating capacity like the Bowtie Theater has, again, 437 seats is needed because that is what pays for the cost of presenting those performances. So I'm here tonight to propose that you take advantage of the structure of the Bowtie Movie Theater building, which is already there and perfectly designed, and transform it into a performing arts center, hopefully with the ability to screen interesting film presentations, as well as music, dance, theater, and more. Obviously, I would like to keep producing our film series, but, and this is really important, I realize that may not happen, believe me, I understand that things change. And truthfully, this classic film series of mine started out as just a good idea, so to have it thriving after 30 years is all a plus. I did work really hard to make it happen, that goes without saying, but it is also the community of Greenwich which supported it as well. Greenwich is responsible for one half of our membership, the other half comes from surrounding communities that come for the program, but- but also come to Greenwich because it is such a unique town. I call Greenwich the Lincoln Center of Connecticut. It's a destination location. People want to come here. There are great restaurants every few feet you walk, and beautiful stores, and after 6:00 PM, lots of convenient parking for the theater. It's a place you want to travel to because there's a lot going on here. Even if you get an ice cream cone at the bottom of the hill and walk up the avenue, you've had a great time. I've spoken to Katie DeLuca, and she told me that there was an initiative years ago to bring a performing arts center to Greenwich. Needless to say, it never got accomplished. But it seems that there may be a possibility now. The structure is there. I Googled and printed out some information on the architects that transformed Lincoln Center. Their name is Diller, Scofidia, and Renfro. I figured, why not start at the top? And I have that information. If you'd like it, why not call them? So, here I am presenting the idea formally to the board. I think you might agree with me that in our personal lives, but also in the life of a community, you only get so many of these opportunities. It seems to me it would be a shame to let another chance go by without, at the very least, exploring the possibility of making the Bowtie Movie Theater into a performing arts center and enriching this very special Greenwich community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do any other members of the public get hello?
Good evening, members. My name is Ron Brien. I'm a attorney here in Greenwich.
B-R-Y-A-N?
B-R-I-E-N. And I'm a real estate attorney here in Greenwich, representing several clients who own property in the immediate area of the train station. We'd like to address some concerns to the board as far as traffic and parking would now be the appropriate. Okay. Greenwich Plaza proposes to transform the existing Bowtie Theater on Railroad Avenue into its ultimate theater concept. This concept features luxury recliner seats, reserved seating, and food slash alcohol delivery to the seats. The theater is being upgraded for one reason. The operator intends to improve its overall revenues, as stated in its report. Improving the theater's overall revenue means Bowtie wants to sell tickets for all of their proposed 550 seats, for every movie, for every showing. The more ticket sales means more people driving into downtown Greenwich. The current usage of the theater has no relationship to the theater's future use. The traffic study performed by Kim Lee Horn does not address the intensification of the project and the severe traffic impacts that will result by the transformation of the theater into a modern luxury theater with high-end accommodations and more and better movies. The traffic study simply did not reflect the concept that 200 or so people might be going in to see the movies at the same time as 200 people might be exiting the theater, creating a congested situation. My clients conducted their own traffic study. And my clients hired three off-duty police officers. And we studied the traffic on Friday, September 20th, Saturday, September 14th, and Sunday, September 22nd. And we counted cars and we counted people. On a typical Friday night, there were 205 people that went to the movies from 4:00 to 9:00 PM. 39 went from 4:00 to 5:00. And the second most important time was, we had, the theater had 100 patrons from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. On Saturday, the number of patrons to the theater went down from 2:05 down to 1:30. And on Sunday, the patrons went down from 1:30 to 99. The average number of people going to the movies on that particular weekend, a Friday night through Saturday night, was just 368. And the night with the most movies was obviously Friday. And the time that were most popular were 4:00 to 5:00 PM and 6:00 to 7:00 PM. Now, referring to driving downtown...
Mr. Brian?
Yes?
Would you be able to give a copy? Darn.
Be able to give a copy of that to staff when you're done? Because we will then forward it to the traffic consultant. You don't have to do it right this minute, but just when you finish speaking. So if you would forward your, give your study to Mr. LaRoe, and he will share it with the traffic consultant.
Yes, I'd be happy to. Now, referring to people driving downtown solely going to the movies, those people will continue to park along Railroad Avenue or in the lot at the corner of Railroad Avenue and Arch Street. However, people that are coming to town for dinner and a movie usually park at the bottom of Greenwich Avenue. As we all know, those are where most of the restaurants are located. They park, eat, and then they walk to the movie theater. The ultimate theater concept with its three additional movie screens will certainly draw many more people. That's the goal. With the new theater, more and more movie patrons will park on Greenwich Avenue and walk to the theater without moving their cars. Where will the restaurant patrons park? The traffic study does not address this parking problem. Under the proposal, the public will still be allowed to park on Level A in the Plaza Garage only during non-commuter hours. The traffic study does not define what non-commuter hours, but for argument's sake, let's assume non-commuter hours begin at 5:30 PM. If movie patrons cannot park on Level A before 5:30 or 6:00 PM at night, where will the people going to the 4:00 or 4:30 or 5:00 PM showings park? At 4:30 PM, the Plaza Garage is full of commuters and office employees. And the avenue parking spaces are filled by shoppers. And we all know it takes several circles around the block to find a place to park on Greenwich Avenue as it is, without a theory, without a theater. The traffic study does not address this. Greenwich Plaza may respond by saying that moviegoers will be able to park on Level B or C. However, they would not be able to park on Levels B or C during peak commuter hours. Thus, steering moviegoers to Levels B and C is not a viable solution because there will be no parking available during peak movie times. On a typical Friday, according to our study and the proposal, when six different movies are shown, that six different movies are shown between 4:30 and 5:30, a couple hundred cars with employees will be trying to exit the garage simultaneously with a couple hundred cars filled with moviegoers trying to enter and park in the garage. The traffic study did not address this traffic and parking impact. The applicant claims that valet parking will alleviate traffic impacts of the project. However, in fact, valet parking will exacerbate the parking and traffic problems caused by the project. The project does not include any valet parking-only lanes. Therefore, a lineup of cars waiting to valet park will be, will back up for blocks along Railroad Avenue and Arch Street. Because the train station lobby is also the movie theater entrance, there could be hundreds of commuters, office employees, and moviegoers all converging in this one place at one time. We feel that Greenwich, Greenwich's train station will certainly become a clone of Grand Central Station. One problem that the traffic study does acknowledge on page 13 is that, quote, "Some individual vehicle movements at the Arch Street intersections with Railroad Avenue and with Horse Neck Lane slash Greenwich Plaza currently operate with lengthy delays, operating at a level of service E or even F during the peak hours." The project with increased traffic will increase the density at those intersections, and those locations will be solid Fs. The traffic study is incomplete also because it was only conducted in one day. It was Tuesday, April 20th, 2019. The traffic study was conducted on a day hardly anyone goes to the movies. Why wasn't the traffic study conducted over a Friday, Saturday, and Sunday when most people go to the movies and when increased traffic from the project will impact the most? Further, the traffic study examined four locations. Arch Street and Horse Neck Lane, as well as Greenwich Plaza at 5:00 PM. But the data for the, for the traffic at 5:00 PM at that intersection of Arch Street and Horse Neck Lane is missing. The traffic study information is blank.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll wrap up. The traffic study did not evaluate other vital surrounding intersections that all feed into Railroad Avenue, such as Mason and Havemeyer, Milbank and Mason and Bruce Park, Soundview Drive and Arch Street. At rush hours, these intersections are already ground zero in terms of density and congestion. It's ludicrous for the traffic study to claim that it is very unlikely that, quote, "Increases in traffic delay will be on the order of six tenths of a second or less due to reduction in cinema seats." The reduction in cinema seats is a clever but irrelevant distraction. A dazzling, brand-new luxury theater showing all the top movies in a beautiful atmosphere may attract 500 people to a showing for each movie. Remember, the people that will patronize Greenwich's theater will not only come from Greenwich. They will come from Fairfield and Westchester, and the cinema will become a regional destination. The study further claims that generally tolerable traffic conditions currently exist in downtown Greenwich. Does anyone here think that the traffic in downtown Greenwich is currently tolerable? The traffic on Putnam is far from tolerable when there is an accident on I-95. The traffic on Museum Drive through Meads Point and Bruce Park is not tolerable when I-95 is bumper-to-bumper. Overall, the project will have significant adverse impacts in Districts 1, 2, 3, and 4. Simply, all of these neighborhoods will be clogged with vehicles. Gems, ambulances, and fire trucks will never be able to make it through the inevitable gridlock. Critical minutes to get to Greenwich Hospital could be lost. The traffic study did not address this. Finally, my clients find it preposterous that the traffic study would conclude that future traffic volumes, with or without the proposed development, will be almost identical and that the project will have a minor increase in traffic. For these reasons, we do not support the application. Thank you very much.
Just a second, before you go away. So you don't support having any...
Darn. You don't support the movie theater?
Correct.
Okay. Now, your argument on the movie theater, if I captured it, is that even though there's going to be 104 less seats, that the current movie theater is empty, and now it's going to be full. So you're saying we would be better off with no movie theater at all? Or a bad movie theater? I'm not being humorous. I'm just saying, right now, you have a movie theater that has a lot more seats. But what are you saying? You don't, you don't want it, you want to keep it the way it is?
A movie theater is not the best use for that site because of the traffic and parking issues. To your point about how we have three screens right now, the theater will add three screens despite the reduction in seats. But the theater is not occurring, not attracting the highest grossing films across the nation. The reason is, is because it's dilapidated and it's worn down, and it, it does not have the recliner seats, and it's not attractive. We don't serve food and alcohol to the seats. So therefore, with six movies versus three, you're going to get more people, and people will want to come for the amenity.
So what you don't want is an, you actually don't want to see an increase in people using that area?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. We believe that downtown is congested and saturated enough without the theater.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Warner, you were standing up. Yes, Mr. Berg, I got you.
Good evening. Hello.
Hello, Mr. Warner.
My name is Mike Warner. I live here in town on the top of the avenue at Lafayette Court. I just have one or two programmatic questions. As you may know, about 20% of the population of Greenwich are seniors. And there's a number of individuals who are more or less impaired. And one would wonder why, when I go to the movies at Portchester, I take a short escalator up to the movie theater. And this train station, which is supposed to be a gateway to Greenwich and state-of-the-art, doesn't have escalators. As part, you go to Asia, and there are on-demand escalators wherever you go. This is supposed to be a statement of what Greenwich is, and we have what looks like a lovely lobby area, although there's no trees or any internal garden space. There's no escalators. One would wonder about that. I also noticed, I didn't see any, and I stand corrected, I didn't see any solar panels or any solar additions. And also, speaking from personal experience, there are more and more drivers, commuters, who would like to have some sort of a charging station for their electric car. Greenwich is notorious for not having anything, or other towns all have something. I'm sure the economics are going to have to be considered in terms of what the value of airspace is versus other puts and takes. But it's something to consider as an attraction. Those are my three programmatic comments. I leave them to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Mr. Berg?
Evening, everybody. Peter Berg from Cosco. I think this is my sixth or seventh meeting on the train station.
Oh dear. Well, we've only had two. Isn't that nice?
Right. So, but I, and I'm a fan of the concept of the, of a new station. But I also like what I'm hearing here tonight from Mr. Levy and from Mr. McRae. Maybe something a little grander. But I do want to, and I'm a fan of Ms. Green. So, but I do want to comment that, on the MI, on the concept of MI.
Yeah, we don't have it before us right now.
Well...
It's not here. It doesn't...
But in a way, it's here, because you're all talking about...
No, we're only talking about the site plan. And they can actually do the site plan. They could actually redo this on the part that they own without doing the MI.
Well, then let me phrase this differently.
They could do the lease, renew the lease. And somebody correct me from the attorneys. So as I understand it, we're only doing the site plan. And at this point, we are not looking at the MI at all tonight. It was withdrawn, and it's not before us. So we're only talking site plan. And the other thing I thought you'd be interested to discuss, though, and I thought this is why you were here. You've been pushing for a TOD in Greenwich for a long time.
Yep, I did hear that, and I'm, I was delighted to hear that.
I thought you'd like that.
I'm the one, so just to put this in context. I'm the one who keeps pointing out that the population of our downtown has dropped by over 40% since I moved to Greenwich.
Right.
Even though the population of all of Greenwich has remained extremely flat. So what happened was, the downtown population sprawled out into, into mid-country and North Mayanis. And because the population of our downtown left, the stores and restaurants reoriented into what they are today, which is high-end dining and high-end retail that is very dependent on people coming from distances. Okay? So the opportunity, I believe, in the new P-O-C-D that you referred to earlier, is to find a way to repopulate our downtown. And if you repopulate our downtown, then what you could have here is a movie theater that serves residents. It's not trying to compete with Portchester. It's not trying to compete with Stanford or White Plains with something grand. Okay? It's for our residents. And I, and I think that's what Bowtie is actually proposing. So, and I'm hoping that, you know, 20 years from today, we don't have five-car dealerships within two blocks of the Greenwich Railroad Station. We don't have a moving and storage business right across the street. There's a lot more residential. And whatever you can do to make that happen, I think would be a big positive. Now, whether you call that MI or not, because to me, at some point, you have to show that this project is consistent with the P-O-C-D. And by the time, I mean, you've got, we're working under the last one, but it sounds like you're starting to work under the new one. But the new, both of those talk about Greenwich being a residential town. Okay?
Are we good? Anybody else? Sir?
Guys, Peter, it's a question. So in summary, are you, can you turn your mic on?
Ha!
In summary, it sounds like you are supportive of the theater concept in this location.
I think, yeah, I mean, personally, I think having a shared lobby and for both a movie theater and a railroad station, I think that's brilliant. And I think it, you know, it keeps it vibrant. We keep talking about vibrant, we want a vibrant downtown, but again, if you want a vibrant downtown, you have to have people who actually live there.
Yeah, and again, you and I have this debate all the time. The average number of people who live in a housing unit is 2.6 today, 2.6? And it used to be four-plus. There's your 40%, and you don't have families. You have the same number, you have more housing structures downtown than you did because of the density on Millbank, but you don't have as many people living in those structures, and that's just a change. You know, my house used to have six people in it. It has a lot of dogs, but, no, but thank you.
No, you're right. I mean, household size has shrunk.
And a lot of what you're talking about in the downtown is household size.
Right. But if you can figure out how to create family housing in the downtown, it would be great.
Okay, we're on it.
Because that's what's happening in downtowns across the country.
Don't give Mr. Ashworth any more ideas right now. We're trying to get this one done. Thank you, Mr. Berg.
You're welcome.
Anybody else, sir?
Is this mic on? Good evening. My name is...
It's us that can't remember to turn them on. Yes, sir. And will you spell your name for the court reporter?
I will. My name is Eric Grayson. I'm an attorney. I have an office at 175 West Putnam Avenue. I'm also a resident of Greenwich.
We've gotten a letter from you as well.
Yeah, I don't believe so, ma'am.
Okay.
Not, maybe not on this.
Okay.
I'm not one of the usual suspects, but I'm up here on behalf of a number of clients and constituents who represent a broad spectrum of interests of what I will call the sort of lower Greenwich Avenue area, starting from Soundview, going over maybe to Millbank, Havemeyer, starting at Havemeyer, and then coming south, so you can call it So-Hav if you want, but it's really the triangle down below Havemeyer. And I have a number of letters, if I may approach.
If you'll give them to Mr. LaRoe, he'll put them into the record.
And I have one for each of you.
Okay.
If you want to pass them along.
Oh, they have a name. Oh, okay, I know who you are.
I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but I'll take it as a good thing. I have one for Mr. Cohen, if he wants one.
He does.
He does. He loves to read things.
Force of habit. And what I'll do is attach to four letters in this packet, and I can wait till they're circulated. The first is from the Greenwich Property Owners Association, which is really a group of, I would say, building owners, for those interests. And I won't read the full letter, because it'll be in the record, but essentially, it says, "The Greenwich Property Owners Association would like to express its serious concerns on the Greenwich Plaza application as submitted in general, and specifically regarding parking and traffic in an already congested area. Text changes that will affect several downtown buildings and the bulk and location of the theater building." As to the text changes, I'm not here to discuss that tonight, but I believe at the next meeting, we'll be discussing whether the issue of they create spot zoning, and whether we can deal with the application under the existing rules. But that's just the view from 20,000 feet. My area tonight is really parking congestion and gridlock in this lower area. The Greenwich Property Owners Association, please consider carefully, as we believe this development as proposed will have a very negative impact on businesses and building values on Lower Greenwich Avenue. And you can see it signed by the executive board, many people who I'm sure are well-known to you. The second letter is from 200 Railroad Avenue. Obviously, it's about, I'm sure you all know where it is, it's about a block down on Railroad, almost across from the new Greenwich Hardware. Please be advised, as owners of a nearby building, 200 Railroad, we oppose the application as submitted, as we feel the structure proposed on the corner of Arch Street and Railroad Avenues presents parking and traffic issues at an already problematic intersection, and additionally, feel the bulk and size of the building is not consistent with the image we want to protect to the gateway to downtown Greenwich. These are some of the sentiments that I've heard expressed this evening. The Rikenbound Group is the third letter. The Rikenbound Group owns four buildings in Greenwich, and the Rikenground Group states, "We believe there will be many unattended consequences of the proposed redevelopment on Greenwich Avenue. Specifically, traffic caused from the movie theater, if successful, will not only back traffic off in and out of Greenwich from Exit Three, but the overflowing parking needs to be forced onto Greenwich Avenue that will further add the negative feelings about Greenwich trying to drive into outsiders enjoying our town. We do not believe the current parking behind Railroad Avenue, which is the existing lots, is currently being used by most people today, and believe that this parking that currently exists will be used in the future, and we believe that this, that as it currently exists, to be used in the future is a mistake. We are in favor of redeveloping Railroad Avenue, but convenient parking must be designed so the public will not only know it exists, but we're happy to use it." And that's a theme I'll be getting into about parking as you come into Greenwich, coming down Greenwich Avenue, access to lots, and what the outsiders are having problems with. The last is a letter from 396 Greenwich LLC. It's in that area, and if you don't know it, it's the building that Theory is in, and that's another good example, because these are, we've been talking mostly about people coming to Greenwich and dining, but there are shops in that area. Planning a zoning commission as nearby property owners to Greenwich Plaza project, "We have serious concerns about parking and traffic congestion in this section of town. At this time, the parking availability is inadequate, and congestion is common. We ask you to scrutinize all traffic studies and parking projections. We believe, we support development only if it conforms with zoning regulations and does not have a negative impact on property owners." You'll bear with me for a second.
Yeah, and I also wanted to ask you about how long you were planning on speaking.
I'll be speaking for probably five minutes or less.
Great, okay. Just while you're getting ready to do that part, our research on Greenwich Avenue parking, is that a lot of the parking problem is due to employees parking on the avenue and not necessarily the shoppers, that that's what the inadequacy of the parking is right now, and not necessarily the people using the stores? And we have been working with the property owners to address this.
And I'm here on behalf of the property owners and the tenants to give you their views of what they think the impact, or the negative impact is of the movie theater.
I will let you, please, tell us.
And I'll be as brief as possible, while, of course, adequately here, if I may approach. Bruce, I'll save you a walk. My pleasure. This I'd also like entered into the record, and this is a synopsis of what my clients, if you took those four letters and you took what Mr. Bryan was talking about, the main focus of my presentation, and I won't read the entire letter, is the upgrade of the movie theater, which we believe will have a negative impact on parking on Lower Greenwich Avenue, and will add to congestion and traffic flow patterns in the area that I've sort of identified as So-Hav or south of Havemeyer. And if it helps people, I have some Google Maps of the area. And while we all know the names of the streets, sometimes the cross-streets are a little confusing. Like Mr. Bryan was saying, you should do the increasing by the proposed movie theater, but not the number of available parking spots. At present, there is a complete lack of parking for Greenwich Avenue, below Havemeyer. The change in the movie theater with an addition in a food court and food mart, if that's going to happen, is going to make matters worse, not better. Greenwich, in the last 20 years, has completely changed. My clients and other developers have offered to build parking often around Greenwich Avenue, and have been rebuffed by certain town officials who have stated the people of Greenwich don't want more outsiders coming in. That ship has sailed. Either by design or default, downtown Greenwich has become a destination for outsiders between the shopping and the dining. Without the so-called outsiders, the shops and the restaurants will not be able to survive. The So-Hav section, Greenwich, below Havemeyer, has probably the most transformation in this area. Gone are the smaller, really local burger joints like Sundown and Thataway. East End replaced Thataway, which was underperforming, is now booming. South Bay replaced Sundown. Little Beat replaced the National, which was underperforming. Their Steam Harvest Mediterranean is getting upgraded, La Pan Quotien, excuse my accent, and better shops like Theory, which is at 396 Greenwich Avenue, have now taken over that section. That section in particular is going to be the most impacted by an increase in the movie theater. The reason I focus on this area is because it's not only where the restaurant patrons park between 6:00 and 11:00, but where the moviegoers park, and will park in greater numbers if the theater's revamped. This is where the developer needs to be held accountable, and needs to come forward with more information and release its internal numbers. At present, there are 654 seats in the movie theater, which is going down to 525 for a paper loss of 129. However, it's not the seat count that matters, but seat utilization. Right now, the theater's underutilized. Let's assume the theater attracts, throwing a dart, 130 to each show now. The developer needs to provide the town what it and Bowtie project as the new seat count. That is very paramount for your endeavors, because that's the only way to judge the increase in cars and impact on parking. There are no new parking spaces being created, but there will be new demand, and that demand will either, for the most part, park on Lower Greenwich Avenue and go to the movie theater, or will dine on Greenwich Avenue and leave their cars. Back of the envelope math, if there are 130 seats being utilized now, and the number goes to 500, that's an increase of 370 seats. Assuming two people for a car, that's 185 to 200 cars for each show. These cars will take up all the spots on Lower Greenwich Avenue, meant for the restaurants and the shops. The remedy, or one proposed remedy, and this is really addressing one of your questions, is the developer should be required, as part of its plan, to build at least parking for 400 cars at one of the lower lots in this area. And I'll start to wind down. One of Greenwich's biggest problems is that parking lots are hidden, or not really apparent to outsiders. No one uses the lot under Greenwich Plaza, which is what Rikenbound was saying, and if they could find it in the first place. And if you look at the maps that I just had, if you come up 95 and you go up Arch Street to access Greenwich Avenue, it appears there's no parking except for the Soundview lot, but that to an outsider is not close to Greenwich Avenue. Once a car turns onto Greenwich Avenue, there's an entrance to a lot by steam, but unless you know it's there, it looks like an alleyway. Not only can cars not park on Lower Greenwich Avenue, it becomes completely congested out as Railroad, Fawcett, and Arch Street. Greenwich residents circle, people circle, they go up Mason, across Fawcett, and down again. If you come down Greenwich Avenue from the top, there's not one visible lot, because I believe all the lots are on the side street. The problem of lack of obvious parking is going to get worse if the new theater is as successful as they're predicting. Winding down. It's extremely difficult for businesses to survive on Greenwich Avenue. You always hear that the national chains are driving the moms and pops out. However, if Ralph Lauren, an international brand, can't make it on Greenwich Avenue, then we implore the board not to let Ashworth make it any more difficult for essentially locally-owned and operated restaurants and shops on Lower Greenwich Avenue to survive. My clients ask that you put this project on hold until the developer comes forward with its projection for seats in the theater and a plan to build more parking at its cost. And I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
We were, I want it to be comprehensive. We take this very seriously, so, and again, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Grayson?
Yes, sir.
Just to make sure I understand, is that the clients that you represent are actually think that the significant detriment to this project is actually the theater itself?
That's the...
And the people that would actually be drawn to the theater on a constant basis?
Yes, sir. That's the issue that they wanted me to focus on.
Okay.
Because the train station, and I don't want to get too far afield, the commuter traffic will probably somewhat stay the same. It's going to be, I mean, there's nothing more or less attractive. I mean, I don't know, for instance, no one's going to say, "Gosh, this train station's so gorgeous, I'm now just starting commuting." You either commute or you don't. It's the theater that's driving the traffic issues.
Actually, then, I actually really want to kind of dive right into a situation. I think Mr. Bryan had brought this up briefly. People are coming to the theater, but not necessarily using the businesses around the theater, because they're coming to the destination of the theater, but not buying food or having drink in the businesses.
My presentation addressed both issues. It addressed the issue of theater-goers coming just to go to the theater. Where will they park? Typically, they park on Greenwich Avenue. However, we also addressed the issue of people who would come to dine and then go to the theater. So all of a sudden, the theater's now, it's as attractive as it's being projected. So a certain portion of people will go, "Let's go grab a meal," on Lower Greenwich Avenue. They're going to leave their car there, go to the theater, and it's this increase in, it's this increase of sort of, the success of the theater itself is going to drive double and triple the numbers.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I was just going to tell you, stick around, because we're going to, there was one thing we wanted to focus on with the traffic consultant tonight, which is the pickup and drop-off, because we believe that that is one of the things that aggravates traffic on railroad avenues significantly. If we can get that moving better, it'll be easier. The second thing is, we will talk to him about some of these concerns you've raised, but so you know, normally what they do is they use a big fat book on the trip generation of any given project. So there's a standard that they use, and they used it for this, and that's just how you project traffic and who's going to patronize, but we can delve into that. Mr. Lo?
Two things. One is, in general, I'm not entirely clear, I mean, I read what you gave us, exactly who the people are that you're representing. In general, people who have businesses, whether they're restaurants or other types of things, would welcome an increase in demand, just in general, right? Demand is a good thing if you're in a business area. So, you know, I'd like to look at that a little bit more in detail. But I can also say that I'm sure, I can speak for this commission, that we will be very interested in seeing the very data that you're requesting from the applicant, and I'm sure they have projections, and we'd like to get their view on the impact.
Well, demand is a two-sided coin in this particular instance, because what's the demand for? In the case of the pure theater-goers, the demand is for parking spots. In the case of the theater-goers who are coming to the restaurants, yes, in one sense, it's demand for the restaurant...
And I'm sure they have projections, and we'd like to get their view on the impact.
Well, demand is a two-sided coin in this particular instance, because what's the demand for? In the case of the pure theatergoers, the demand is for parking spots. In the case of the theatergoers who are coming to the restaurants, yes, in one sense, it's demand for the restaurants. However, the negative impact, if you go to the restaurant, you park on Greenwich Avenue, and then you go to the theater, is it's creating a parking problem. So it's the allure of the new theater that's sort of driving this parking issue.
I understand.
Okay.
But it also could increase demand for the services that are provided there in the area.
In one sense, yes.
There could be a benefit.
And in one sense, it makes...
Right.
And in one sense, it drives demand away, because if you can't park, you go someplace else. So it's, as I said, it's a double-sided coin.
And you're also surfacing the notion that perhaps a better signage for where there is available parking that is underutilized might be...
That's one thing. As I drove the route today, just to make sure I was on solid ground. And I've lived here forever, so I know where everything is. I sometimes can't find some of those lots. You know, you roll by, especially that one by steam. You know, our parking is very difficult, and when you get there, half the time, the lots...
There are no spots in there, so you're not going to find a spot.
Yeah, that's what I mean. And sometime, if you could find them, you can't park in them. But, so that's... You've been doing this. Parking is always...
Paramount.
Yeah, it's the 800-pound gorilla in most of these applications.
Thank you very much.
And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Cohen, I think that's it for the public. Anybody else?
No.
Yes, sir.
Ron Bryan again, B.R.I.E.N. To your point about demand, if the applicant installs a food hall with, let's say, a dozen variety, high-end caviar, crepe, whatever idea they have, into the movie theater, in addition to serving meals at the seats, that will reduce demand to have dinner in the restaurants on the avenue, and the restaurants will suffer as a result.
Thank you, sir. So, Mr. Cohen, at this point, would you like to put Mr. Canning on stage? Or would you like to address us again yourself? What would you like to do?
Yes, I will put Mr. Canning on stage to talk about the drop-off, pickup, but also to address some of the comments you just heard. You know, since Mr. Grayson talked about his personal experience, unlike some of you folks on the commission, I go to that movie a lot. I park in the commuter parking lot a lot. I have never been there at any time that there weren't hundreds of empty spaces in the commuter lot. So for those of you who do go to the movies in Greenwich, I'm sure you find the same situation.
Yes.
Before I turn it over to Mr. Canning, Ms. Alvin, Mr. Grayson was very careful about telling the commission whom he represented. Mr. Bryan was not. And I wonder if I could ask through you, Ms. Alvin, this being a public meeting, who Mr. Bryan is representing?
My pleasure, Mr. Cohen. I represent 410 Greenwich LLC, BP Green Valley, who also owns a building on Greenwich Avenue, and Westchester Tower Associates. Each of my clients own commercial buildings on the avenue in the immediate vicinity of the theater. And whereas Mr. Harvey, I believe, said that the surrounding properties will benefit, my clients disagree and feel the theater will hurt the value of their properties and the businesses that rent in their buildings. Thank you.
So if, now, Ms. Alvin, we could turn it over to John Canning?
The commission yesterday had the most questions about what you had been working on with the pickup and drop-off. We have a person who uses the station five days a week and is very experienced in the pickup and drop-off, and he's very concerned about it. So we wanted to get to that first, and then we can raise the questions about, I think, the ITE, your ITE data for the theater that come from the public. But I'd like to get to the pickup and drop-off, because I do think that addresses the traffic issue. But before we do that, your level of service change that's at F is a no-build scenario as well, is it not? Trying to remember. I couldn't find the level of service. I think it was Mr. Bryan talked about something being a level of service going to a steady F. And I...you may not remember either. I thought it's fine. I thought it was in your no-build as well. I couldn't remember. Because at that table, I think, is in your last submission, and I don't have it here.
Good evening for the record.
Hi. I'm sorry, I always do this to Mr. Canning. I'm so sorry to the court reporter.
My name is John Canning. I work for Kimley Horn. It's good to see you all again tonight.
Sorry. I get too intense about this stuff. I'm sorry.
It's important stuff, and I do appreciate that this is a signature project for the town and that you folks are working really hard. It's a difficult site. It's long and narrow. Railroad avenue is relatively narrow, and we're all working to see if we can find the optimal solution. With respect, Madam Chair, I'd really like to try and quickly address some of the comments before I forget them, and then I can devote my time...
Is that okay with you guys? Because I know, Peter, you have very strong feelings about the...okay.
But your first question relative to the levels of service, I guess there's two points. The DPW had a comment that our table wasn't in the right order, so I want to make sure that...
It is in the right order. You can pass those out.
The levels of service are provided on the rightmost column for the PM and the...one of the middle columns, you've got the existing, the no-build and build. So in the existing conditions, when you get a chance to look at them, you'll see there are F levels of service. The DPW, in one of their memorandums, or memoranda, indicated that there is a traffic signal improvement plan proposed for all of the intersections on Arch Street down to Steamboat and then back up Steamboat to Greenwich. They're installing what's known as an adaptive traffic signal system. Adaptive traffic signal systems basically do real-time counts of the number of vehicles passing through the intersections, and they increase the capacity of an intersection. I'm not going to tell you that your problems are going to go away. What I am telling you is that you will have increased capacity and better conditions than you will today. We did our detailed analysis of existing, future conditions without the project and future conditions with the project. They were based on, as Commissioner, Chairman Alvin said, the Institute of Transportation Engineers' projections for cinemas. I think the best way I can describe it is that the concerns, and I understand that the neighbors have concerns and they're represented by their attorneys, are somewhat unfounded for a number of reasons. First of all, the Bautier Cinema is kind of late to the game on this whole improved cinema, big seats, alcohol, and food. There's already some built in the area. There's more coming. So it's not going to be that I'm going to drive from White Plains to go to one of the... to the Greenwich one. Number two, part of the benefit or part of the way to increase revenues is instead of doing it by volume, you increase it on the profit that you make on the product. So you're making it on the ticket for the movie theater. You're making it on big time on the alcohol, and you're making it on the food. So that's more so than putting butts in seats. That's where you drive your revenue up. In addition, movie theaters, for the most part, and dinner, is after the peak hour. People are trying to get home at 5:00 and at 6:00. And then after 6:00, it's like, okay, let's go for dinner and a movie. So typically, it's an off-peak issue, so it won't be that significant. How should I phrase this? It would be a miracle if every show had 550 people at it. They'd be lucky if they get 550 people probably three times a season. So there have been discussions about having 550 people and so many people per car and 400 space parking lot. It's unrealistic. They probably will increase average attendance somewhat, but it's not going to be that significant. It's going to be in the off-peak, and they'll make it up on the margins. The revenue is driven by that. This movie theater has the required number of parking under zoning. It's available in the Greenwich Plaza garage. I did talk to the Ashford Company representatives. The garage is not well-signed for parking, and you picked up on that, Mr. Lo. And they would be willing to work with the town and put up signs that say, cinema parking, evening parking, event parking, to encourage people to park there when the commuters are not there, so that people who go to the cinema would park there. Relative to increasing parking on Greenwich Avenue, the parking is available. And if the opportunity to dine and to watch a movie is available, it's unlikely you're going to park on Greenwich Avenue, eat first, and then go down and eat again. So that kind of, I think that addresses most of the issues from a traffic perspective. I do want to, I really appreciate the thoughts that you've given us so far. It's challenging. We like challenges, so...
We try to be challenging.
We appreciate the thought that you've put into it. And we've, you asked us to sit down with the town. We met with the town. We put some ideas out there. We've come back to you with them. We'd like to discuss them with you, hear your input, and see where we go from there. So with that...
This is Peter.
Boy, I wish this was a little...
Bigger, you mean?
Bigger, yes. It looked bigger on my computer screen. So this is Railroad Avenue.
We could give you King's Cross again.
That was bigger.
Yeah, it was bigger.
Sure.
Oh, there's a thought. Yeah, we have them. Mr. Canning, you don't have to worry. We have it all in front of us. Mr. Lo just pointed out. We all have the binder with the stuff. We can look at it.
Thank you.
And there's, see, it's unraveling as we speak. No worries. Okay. All right, we're all with you now.
So for the benefit of people in TV land...
I'm not sure that TVs have it on.
TV's not on today?
I don't know.
I'm so disappointed.
It is on?
Okay. So this is Railroad Avenue in the existing condition. Basically, you've got some parking on the south side of the street, parallel parking here. You've got some angled parking here. In total, there are 32 spaces on this side of the street. Then there's some more parallel parking here. There are actually nine spaces plus one loading space. So that was an error in our submission to you. We had said there's 10 spaces on the north side of the street. This space is a 30-minute... Ooh, commercial loading. Thank you, Patrick. Getting a little seasick here.
Look at you.
So this is a commercial loading zone.
Michelle had to fix it, yeah.
Thank you. And we have nine parallel parking spaces here. Right now, oh, this is the proposed condition. The existing conditions are up. Okay.
Can you give him his existing conditions? An engineer is working on it for you.
By the way, we did go out, and we did surveys, we counted. Did I tell you this the last time?
You kind of did, but there was something really interesting that was in Mr. Cohen's letter that I didn't see in your report. They actually know how many people get on each train?
Oh, yes.
And I didn't see, you talk about peak being 6:00 AM and... But you said, I think you say 6:00 to 10:00 or something like that. But they have each single train and who's boarding it, which was kind of interesting to see what was the most crowded one and fascinating.
Yes, yeah, no, it's a busy station, which is good. Which is good.
And that 20% of the volume is actually coming in to the south side.
Yep, yep.
Which surprised me, because they downplay the importance, but that seems to be growing.
Well, you've got two big office buildings on the far side and then some down on Steamboat.
But the south side is played as an egress station, but it actually isn't just egress anymore. A disembarkation, it's changing. And that's downplayed a little bit in Mr. Cohen's letter, but I think you're trying to address it in the pickup and drop-off.
Absolutely.
Okay, go ahead.
So some of the shortcomings of the existing setup out here is that you've only got two spaces for drop-off. You do have a bus stop here, and then you've got a few spaces. I think you have four or five spaces up here on this side. You have no bus stop on this side. Kind of, the bus stop is actually here. The bus stop's in this general area. What else goes on here? You have no designated shuttle areas, and you do have shuttles that drop off and pick up there. So we basically did surveys of both sides of the station. We counted personal vehicles, private vehicles dropping off and picking up, shuttles, taxis. The taxis were kind of hard to get a handle on, because what happens is you don't have a fare, I'll go to the station. And then you sit there, and then you have as many as 12 vehicles sitting at the station. A train comes in, people get out. And then when you count the trains after, the taxis after the trains have left, the number of taxis has gone down from 12 to seven. So really, you only had five taxis at that train, but you've got seven that are sitting there chewing up real estate. We counted the shuttles, and we counted the buses. And so we took those numbers, and we said, in the future, potentially and probably, we're going to have more ride-hail activity, more station activity, and less, we believe, less taxi activity, because it's either going to have to adopt and operate like a ride-hail service...
Yes.
Or it's just going to go away altogether. So we increased the volumes by 25%, except for the buses. We figured the buses probably going to, they probably have capacity built into them. And then we said, how could we accommodate the maximum morning and afternoon demands on both sides, on both sides of the street and then on both sides of the station? So we came up with this plan. I'm not saying it's perfect, and I'm here to hear your input on it, especially, I guess, Mr. Levy, you're the hardest-working Manhattan commuter...
Oh, okay.
On the commission tonight.
You got yourself out of that one.
So this is what we have proposed. Basically, in the darker color here, we're proposing that you have two spaces all day, every day, on this side of the street that will be signed for no parking, drop-off only, and two spaces on this side, no parking, drop-off only. We propose to expand the drop-off and pickup area for shuttles and buses so that you can have both a bus and a shuttle. We propose to provide a space for both a bus and a shuttle on this side. We also propose, and we, you know, we are listening. Sometimes we're a little hard of hearing, but we are listening, and we do like the plaza concept, but we, you know, railroad avenues are relatively busy through-street. So what we are trying to do is to pick up on the plaza concept and do a pavement marking across the street so that you get the sense that you're in the area. We also have, you know, we'll be rebuilding the crosswalk and installing rapid rectangular flashing beacons on either side. Basically, that's the crosswalk sign with the four bars that flash intermittently. There's an interesting side story behind that. They are so effective, about 15% of people stop for a regular crosswalk sign. About 85% of people stop for those rapid rectangular flashing beacon signs. They are so effective that the federal government discontinued their use because they were made by a proprietary owner, and you could only buy it from one person, and it was unconstitutional that somebody could make money on saving lives. So that lasted for about five months, and then they reversed themselves, and now you can put them in again. So I just thought that was kind of interesting. So those are the proposed improvements in the off-peak hours. But we know, you know, the peak hours are in the morning and the evening. The busiest time in the, on Railroad Avenue is in the morning. There's still slightly more inbound commuters than outbound commuters. So basically, in the morning, all of the colored spaces here would be, have a sign that says, "No parking from 7:00 to 9:00, drop-off and pickup only." So you'd be able to come down Railroad Avenue from the west and stop at any of these spaces or any of these spaces, drop off and leave. And if you're coming from the east, you come down and drop off at any of these spaces or any of these spaces and leave. In the evening, there's slightly less activity, so the signs that are in front of these spaces, these spaces here, this one and these few, and these few would say, "No parking 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning, no parking 5:30 to 6:30," I think it was, "5:00 to 6:30 in the evening." But you would be allowed to park in these two spaces and these two spaces. So we're providing, through signage, the number of spaces that you need for drop-off and pickup. That would require two things, as was rightly indicated by DPW in their memo. First of all, we would have to get the town parking services department to agree to this whole concept and the potential loss of revenue and whatnot. That's not, it's easier said than done, but it's, we're looking to the future together, and if that's what it takes to make this station work, we'll figure out a way to make it work. The second issue is, how do you stop people from parking in these spaces? Some people, and I saw a very interesting photograph on the internet today, some people, you know, especially FedEx, will park, take their lumps, take their t... you know, especially FedEx, will park, take their lumps, take their tickets, and they're more than happy because they got a space. The key to, to keeping spaces free, that where you don't want parking, is to tow vehicles. And once you establish the rules, and people get the rules, they don't want to come home, not find their car, or go to the shops, not find their car, and then have to find out where they get it, and find out that the pound is closed until Monday and whatnot. So it's, it's, that's really, we'll have to discuss it with the, the town as to how to do it. That's the most effective way. One of the ways they, they do parking enforcement these days is clamps. And I, just today, I was looking on the internet, and I saw a photograph, and it was a parking lot with a few cars parked, and there was a single wheel with a clamp on it, in one space. So apparently, somebody's solution was to take off their wheel and have their car towed away, and that's how they got away around the clamp issue. Just thought I'd pass that one along as well. Okay, if we can go to the other side, and I'm looking forward to your question, I just want to get to the other side. Thanks, Craig. Okay, so if you can zoom in on the top. So this is what we've basically got on the top. We've got the taxi stand, we've got the ADA parking, we've got some drop-off and pick-up spaces, we've got four parking spaces here, two parking spaces here, and then we've got the private Ashford lot, Ashforth lot. So if you want to just slide it down a little bit, Craig, please. What we're proposing is to widen out, first of all, this area, so there's a four-foot concrete something or other here that's getting removed to provide a wider area, so we can provide a pass-through lane, we can provide drop-off in this area here, and we can then, we can relocate the ADA spaces to this location, so we can provide a designated shuttle drop-off and pick-up area here. So the way we're proposing that this will operate is from nine to five, and then after six-thirty until seven o'clock in the morning, you can park in these spaces, park in these spaces. The Ashford lot is, is their lot during the day, and drop-off and pick-up activity will occur here. Taxis will be just like anybody else, they'll line up to drop somebody off or to pick somebody up. Then in the morning, we would have these spaces here designated for drop-off and pick-up, so before nine o'clock, basically, there'd be no parking in those spaces, you could come in and drop off and pick up. After nine o'clock, you could park there, up until about five o'clock, and then they would be reserved for drop-off and pick-up again. And Ashforth has said that they would permit drop-off and pick-up activity to occur in this lot, and you could just line up around here, so that when your loved one or friend or whatever it is came out, they could come in and find you, walk in, and you could drive away. And they will also provide a staff personnel, kind of like at the airport, to make sure people are doing what they're supposed to do, move them along, or ask them to move into the lot and out of the way if they're blocking traffic. Just before I finish and get to your comments, I just want to point out the other issues that are the other benefits that we're providing. We're proposing to widen the sidewalks here, which was a recommendation of, I believe it was maybe Ms. Goss, I know she also asked for crosswalks down across Greenwich Plaza, they're proposed at either end. We're providing the south station waiting area, the north station, the new north station. We're providing the crosswalks, the textured crosswalks at the intersection of Railroad Avenue, Steamboat Road, and Greenwich Avenue. I think tho, and the covered bike, covered and secure bike locations on both sides. I think those are most of the highlights. So that's how, when we sat down, sat down with the town, we said, we could provide the capacity to accommodate drop-off and pick-up activity. What would happen is, on Railroad Avenue, you would reduce the number of spaces at peak times by ten, but we're proposing to provide an additional, by fourteen, I beg your pardon, but we're proposing to provide an additional fourteen spaces in the lower lot, and an additional nine spaces in the upper lot. And it's up to this board to figure out how to balance the need for drop-off and pick-up and for parking, and we're certainly open to new ideas into taking this plan and making it better or making a new plan. So thank you for your time. I'm not going anywhere, but I want to thank you for your patience.
I'll ask you quickly, level of service analysis. And he made me a sign.
Okay. Level of service analysis of doing the drop-off, of doing this concept?
So basically, what happens now is that you don't have room to accommodate all the activity, so people kind of, they, as soon as they stop.
They sit there.
They, they sit there, and people will get out. So the bottom line is, it will be significantly improved, because you, you won't have people waiting in the travel lane. That was the concept.
And your level of service improvement is mostly at the Greenwich Avenue-Railroad intersection?
No, I, I think it's at both.
It's at both?
Yes, because we're providing a lot more area for people to pull off the road. It, it's amazing what you see at train stations. If you're within a one-minute walk of the train station, I don't care what street you are or what town you are, and your car stops, and you're bringing somebody to the train station, they basically say, oh, I'll get out here. And that's it, the door opens and they're out. So what we're saying is, there's, they can go right there, and they can stop at the curb, not right in the middle of the street where they do now.
Yeah, that was the concept that Mr. Levy had suggested as well. Do you want to comment on this, Peter?
Well, I think that. Because you have so much more space available on the south side, I mean, it's a very clean scheme. The north side is a little more congested, as you were saying, and it's always nice to be able to do more, but there's only so much you can do. Can we go to the north side? Get a little closer, maybe?
No, sir, please?
Yeah, if, if possible. The proposed. Okay, so. Could you walk us through and hear what you were just saying about the intersections and getting out at the intersections?
The, the, so, basically, Greenwich Avenue's here, Arch Street is here. So if, if I want to drop somebody at the station, and.
Yeah, that's good.
There we go. So I can, if I'm coming from this direction, I can come down this way, and I have as many spaces I, as I need during the peak hours. Basically, come to the first one and stop in, at the curb, and the person gets out and crosses, the crosswalk goes in. Coming in the other direction, I can drive down Railroad Avenue in the first of these spaces that I come to that is free, I can pull into it, and the person can get out, basically. And for pickup, you can sit and you can wait. I mean, we did morning and afternoon. Fortunately, in my opinion, the bigger volume of activity is on the south side in Greenwich Plaza in the afternoon, because you have more people coming back from New York on the train, and we have more room there, and it's not a major through-street. I mean, you can go through, obviously, but you're not going from east to west across town.
Right. So also, if we go back to the, those intersections, and especially at the Steamboat.
Yes.
Did you come up with anything that can help with people stopping there?
You know, you mentioned that the last time, and we discussed it, and we didn't put it in. One of, what we could do is, we could put, push this out a little bit, so that there is not the sense that, oh, I have enough room to stop here. So we can go, certainly go back and push this corner out a little bit, so that we can discourage that activity. That's, that's what you were suggesting, I believe, right?
Right, or, or make it more of an indentation, so somebody can. I, you know, I don't know what really works and what's safe, but one or the other, maybe, maybe one or the other.
My, my suggestion would be not to do it. We're providing all of this activ, space here, and if you provide an indentation, then you're encouraging it, and then more people will do it. If we increase the sidewalk here a little bit, we will discourage it, and we'll also have the benefit of providing a little more open space around the park, so maybe that will help to enhance the park a little bit. We're already getting back a little bit of green space on this side. So we, we'll look at it, but I apologize, I do recall that you mentioned that before, and we did discuss it, but it slipped my mind.
Now, can you, can we look more closely at the crosswalk in front of the station, and how much space there is there, and, and this idea of just creating a little bit more, a larger sidewalk space in front of the.
Sure.
Station?
So we have, at this point, proposed, can you zoom in on that, please, Craig? I know you're doing it. Right here, that's it?
Well, we have it in front of us.
Okay, that's fine. So basically, the, as shown, right, it's the same width, the crosswalk is the same width as it is today.
Yes.
We have provided curb bumpouts, which give you the benefit of having a little bit of protection as you're, if you're a pedestrian about to cross, giving you better visibility of what's coming, and for motorists to see you, and shortening the distance to cross. So they, they are good. We discussed the possibility of widening this. It's, we, we can maybe widen it a little bit to the right, but then we have this driveway here, so we can't move that line there any further than this line here. And if we move it in the other direction, we start to eat into bus drop-offs and pickups. So it's certainly something we could do if there, if there's a sort of a target width. I'm not sure that we want to go the whole width across the street, but maybe if we increase it by fifty, seventy-five percent, it's probably eight to ten feet wide now. Is that kind of along the lines of what you were thinking?
I'll leave that kind of detail up to you.
But that's what you'd like to see, is it widened a little bit?
No, I think that, but I, shortening the distance is a good idea, I like that.
Yes.
It's just that, what is the distance from the curb to the front of the building?
Oh, here?
Yeah.
I'm going to say ten feet from, from that line there. So to this line here is probably sixteen. And, and I know, the last time, and we did look at the possibility of providing a, a cut-out drop-off area, and from what my understanding was, when I heard you say it, was it would be a cut-out drop-off area, then with like a sidewalk outside of it to protect you. And when we looked at that, basically, we determined that we would have to lose a certain amount of sidewalk here, especially if you were, because if you provide this drop-off area with a barrier outside it, and it's only one lane wide, it's not efficient, because one person pulls in, they stop, and then you're.
Well, you need, you need a certain amount of.
You need a lane for somebody to avoid.
Lane, you know, a, a passing lane and things like that. So, and then, and also a curb, another curb with another sidewalk area.
Right. So we did look at that, and we.
Which is, and I, I think that one of the reasons why I, I suggested is that you don't, the, the program for stations has changed considerably, and you don't need that much space. So by accommodating, so it doesn't all, it doesn't all have to be pedestrian inside. Part of, part of that program could be now, switched to accommodating the car and other traffic, so you could take a third of that space or a quarter of that space and turn it into partially outside space and have it, you know, have the, you know, you're going into the building kind of with a car, and it's a, it's a covered drop-off area, and that was the idea. But I understand whether, whether it works or not is something else, I'm just furthering the idea.
Yeah.
So, because you just don't need that much space in, inside for the pedestrians to circulate around. All you need to do is provide some kind of vertical access to the second floor and, and access to either side on the first floor. So be that as it may, I think it, it's a good idea to create more space there.
Okay.
It also kind of announces the entrance a little bit better, and gives you a more, better sense of arriving. So I think that's fairly successful. The, but you did get rid of the, the diagonal parking going forward on the other side, was there any, did you get, you got, you had some parallel parking, but you got rid of all of the, so what was your thinking there? Is it?
Well, so we can use this parking more effectively for drop-off and pick-up if it's parallel.
Right, but how about the rest of the lane going forward to the corner?
Well, I mean, we figured, let's be consistent with it, we're either going to have angled parking or we're not going to have angled parking, we felt.
How many spaces do you lose by doing this?
So we're showing one, two, three, four, five, six. So you probably are losing, if you were to put the angled parking back there, you probably, you might get six more.
Oh, really? Okay, so it's more than I thought, but, all right. Because maybe it's not such a bad idea to put some, some more parking on the street there, but.
We, we can certainly look at that.
Certainly lose seven spaces.
Yeah.
Nineteen to twelve.
Yeah.
There's a right turn lane there now.
And you have a canopy that comes out of, at the entrance. How far does the canopy come out? Does it cover the entire sidewalk or, or no?
That's an architectural question. Frankie there? Sorry, how far does the canopy come out from the building?
It comes out as far as, we extended it, but only so far, it does not extend over the curb.
Yeah, and you do, Mr. Canning?
That's my bad, I apologize.
Yeah. We're giving the court reporter a tough time tonight.
We extended it so that it would provide more.
This is Mr. Prile speaking.
I'm Frank Prile, yes, responding. Further over to provide more coverage over pedestrians, but we cannot extend it any further out into the street beyond the curb line, because there are, there's limitations with the street, because it could be hit by a vehicle.
Right, we have that problem.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You could angle it up.
Well, that's it for now, but thank you for all that.
Okay, so I just want to recap before Mr. McPhee.
And we've got questions for Mr. Lo as well.
Look at the corner, look at this again, look at the angled spaces.
Did he answer?
We talked about the canopy. Thank you, Mr. McPhee.
Thank you for all these changes, I think we're.
We're moving in the right direction?
Yes, I think actually, we're, we're the last time, you know, let's clean up the mess that's out there. I think this goes in a great direction, this is, leaves some bounds from what we had before.
Okay.
I appreciate the thoughts on adding the drop-off, the pickup, access from the various parking lots to platforms. The added benefit of actually more, more park at one corner, that's great, that's fantastic. I'm looking at all upside stuff, except for one big downside.
Okay.
It's that whole enforcement issue. If somebody comes in and parks.
Yep.
It can blow the whole thing right out the window.
Yep.
The idea of, of a car being towed.
Yep.
Yeah, that would drive a lot of people nuts, but it would work.
Yep.
We were joking yesterday, actually, about hiring some of those people from the airports, you know.
Well, so that's not a bad idea either.
So, I think, to me, we're making great strides here.
Yep.
But that particular thing, the enforcement.
Mm-hmm.
Is critical, because this won't work without that.
I agree.
If, as an example, towing is the solution, we'll have to see how that all is going to completely work, soup to nuts.
Yep.
Because if that's, this is what we're going to do, that's like, who's going to do it, when are they going to do it, where do the cars go, so on and so forth, that whole idea.
Yep.
So, but I think this, this goes in, in the proper direction to solve the issues you have. Is the crosswalk raised as well?
Yes, absolutely.
As it is now?
As it is now.
Okay. And each, I guess, in the morning and the evening, that enforcement actually is going to have to be the same, because you never know what happens overnight, if somebody's parked there overnight, and so on and so forth. So I think that's something really to consider, and actually kind of figure that out.
So, so I, I agree, and I think it's going to take careful discussion and consideration with police, town officials, DPW. The best examples, I guess I can give are, one, training wheels, right? So, the first day, you don't go out and start towing people left and right, because it's just gonna blow up in your face. You've gotta put the message out, this is what's gonna happen.
Put a sticker on their car and let them try to take it off.
Put a sticker on their car, you know, have people out there the first few days. After, you know, after a week or two, okay, most civilized people will get the message, and the people that don't, then, in my opinion, you either have to have somebody out there, so it's, it's, it's like the airport example that you gave. Or, if you have towing and people know that they're going to get towed, and they've been told they're gonna get towed, and they've been warned that they're gonna get towed, and they know there's a reason for it, I'm confident that, and I've seen it work in many other cities, they have areas that you can park there at night, but you can't park there during the day, and you know that you can't, because they need the lane for something else.
Right, right.
So, but it's not a click your fingers thing, we're gonna have to sit down with the town and work it out. We did have a meeting with DPW staff, and they raised the same issue, but they said, yeah, it's something we had to talk about.
So, you're gonna have, you're gonna have to have some kind of signage? And maybe some personnel?
Yes.
Including maybe, you said, some lighting or whatever, to coordinate how this works.
But a tow truck sit in one of the empty spaces.
Well, so, I have, yeah, there you go. You could just leave a tow truck there in one of the spaces.
And also, you have the shuttle and the bus?
Yep.
Which also should be demarked in a particular way, which makes it look like it's proprietary.
Correct.
So that it really looks like a, the front of a train station.
Yep.
Because you have all these activities there that are focused on that.
So, the bus is relatively easy, because under Connecticut law, you can establish a bus stop and put up a bus stop sign, and you're, you're not allowed to park in the bus stop, and most people understand that.
So, you just make people understand this?
So, and it's, you're right, it's not too dissimilar, but people get the bus stop issue. What I would do with the shuttle is I would put it right next to the bus stop, and you have a sign at the end of both of them that says, "No parking," and arrow that way. And I think people will get that as well. But it's, they absolutely must be, you know, signed, and if you don't have enforcement, people don't obey the rules. But once people realize there is enforcement, then it becomes much easier. There's one more funny story for you. In Ireland, when you were growing up, right, if you misbehaved, your mother would get the wooden spoon, and she'd hit you with it, right? So, it used to be that all she had to do was pick up the wooden spoon, and you knew you better behave. So, the World Cup was on in France in nineteen ninety, Jack Shearach just died, so it was on when he was there, and Ireland were in it, and everybody was going, and people wanted to know how the gendarme were gonna control the Irish fans, because the Irish fans are crazy. And they showed a picture of all the gendarmes like this, and they all had a wooden spoon tucked in there. So, that's enough, that's enough for one night.
That's a very cute story.
Clever.
Okay, anybody else, you had some questions for me?
Do any, are there any studies of a similar parallel parking setup that might inform your judgment in regard to human nature, which might entail somebody pulling in during one of these peak hours, and the person who's driving is told by the passenger, "Stop."
Yep.
"I'm getting out."
Yes.
So, suddenly, they're not, you're not making use, and this could be all part of the enforcement issue, but I'm not pulling all the way down to the end to let the five cars or four cars behind me pull in and make the whole thing more efficient. So, that's a question, I don't know whether you've looked at that.
So, it's, that's kind of what they do badly, or semi-good, at the airports, when you pull into the arrivals and the departure lounge, the areas at LaGuardia and Kennedy, and basically, there's one through lane, and then there's three lanes that just scrum, and guys with whistles, and they just sort of wave you down, and if you're there too long, they blow you on. So, we hope that Greenwich can do better than that. I'm seeing some heads shaking here.
It'll, it'll take discipline.
Good luck.
Okay.
The other thing is during the non-peak hours, when parking is permitted, if you looked at the potential congestion issue associated with people who are trying to parallel park, as opposed to just putting it into a slot.
Right, we actually haven't looked at that, so it's something I'll have to look at.
Because that's gonna cause...
Yep.
Not everybody's really good at that.
Okay.
On that regard, I was thinking that having policemen stationed at this important intersection of cars and pedestrians is probably a good idea, and the town should probably consider that as an idea.
I think regardless of what happens at this train station, that over time, peak hour policing of busy pedestrian vehicular crossings is important. I mean, you have it on the avenue where you have intersections, this is the equivalent of an intersection, it's a street that has an intersecting pathway, basically.
Sounds like a good idea to me.
Yep.
All right.
The other thing is, which is not your bailiwick, but the park has a water feature at the, at the end of it. And I believe, I was told, it was a waterfall, and...
Actually, but Mr. Canning's not gonna do the park...
The simplest answer to that is, the idea is to have a feature there that makes the park an attractive place to be, and an interesting place to be, and we're open for a conversation as to what that feature is.
So, anyway, there you go.
Peter, if you want to talk to, that you have to go back to the architect for that?
Very good.
Okay, so, it has been suggested that we take a quick bio break?
Sure.
And...
Do I have to come back?
You have to, I don't think so. Do you have any more questions? Does anybody have any more questions for Mr. Canning?
Actually, one thing, back on my mind, the connection from the lower building parking lot, the commuter lot?
Yeah.
The pedestrian connection?
Yes.
Right now, to actually leave the lot from both ends, you're walking through the common driveway in and out.
Yep.
I know, I don't even know if it's still there. In one corner on the Steamboat roadside, there was one space that was kind of not there anymore, and somebody had installed some wood steps or something. If there was some connection from the lower level garage out to the sidewalk, so people can park there and then walk up and around?
So, there are sidewalks that come out of both the Steamboat Road and the Greenwich, the Arch Street driveways to the lower level?
Okay.
And then they go up the street, and you can go up the street on either side, you can go up Steamboat or up Arch to Railroad, and then make a left or right.
Okay.
But you can also, if you prefer, park deeper in the garage, and there's a stairs that goes up to the statue on top, and then you can come out, go past the park, and over the stairs, and into the lobby from the backside.
So, that theory's okay? I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
There might be, I mean, the, the enunciation of the pedestrian access from the underground, a covered parking, all the way over to Railroad Avenue, could be done with kiosks and some covered sections that would help people understand that this is a connection between that parking and going underneath the bridge and to...
Understood, better way finding.
Something, a little bit more, more signage, more something.
Sure.
Could be, street furniture.
Sure, we can look at that, right?
That could be kind of cute and nice way of leading somebody on a path and announcing that this is a parking, this is, there's more parking for you, kind of thing.
Sure.
But thank you, thanks very much, very nice effort.
Thank you.
Bio break, you're gonna have people go straight.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Cohen, you will be, take a break. What do you guys figure? Can we do it in eight minutes, and we'll reconvene at ten ten? Okay.
I, right, right.
No, I know, I saw you.
I wanted to ask you, she explained that a little bit. So, yeah, if you can refresh my memory, I'm sorry. I, I, the last time, it's, 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 it's,[1733.13]
...the applicant very early on is that we were looking for that connection.
Because I think this is actually the beginning of it, of actually taking the materials here, the plantings, the treatments, the lighting, and carrying it down under the railroad and past the office buildings to the bridge, because that's actually, it's essentially part of the site.
Exactly.
In a strange way.
Yes.
So you're really now connecting this major corner under or across the tracks down, so then the museum and everything else can connect in the opposite direction.
Exactly.
And the big disconnect would be the bridge.
Yes.
We'll figure that out later. Can you get to the stairs that go to, that goes to the platform from the plaza?
Yes. Do you know which of these buttons?
It's the, it could be the right.
So if you'll advance it, I'll just point.
Oh, the rest.
Okay. So as I mentioned at the beginning, this is the, the sort of on-grade connection to the, to the park. And as Steamboat drops, you, you get, you access the, both the park and the platform through here, but there's also a connection right through there.
Okay.
So you could walk through here to that mid-level of the stair and then up.
Okay. I know it's not covered now, but will it have to be covered, the stairway, in the future?
That's not been part of the discussion.
Okay.
No.
Okay. It's interesting, because actually, the water feature, completely understand where you're coming from on that. It's a, a great aspect. I think actually, one of the things that we had discussed is, a water feature, whether it's waterfall or fountain, to me, when you say, "I'll meet you in the park," where? At the water fountain?
Right.
At the water feature, that sounds a little funny to me, but...
(laughing)
I think actually, I know you're probably not completely set in terms of exactly what it is, but...
Well, there, there are qualities of it that I, that I think are worth discussing and, and holding on to. I, I, there, which we could certainly do, but I think one of the qualities so far is that, is that it will serve the park better if it's an activated amount of water and not, not like a reflecting pool or something with, with a drip or a triple, a trickle or something like that. I think that what it would give the space, and hate to use the word immersive, but the park becomes a little bit more immersive if, if all the senses are engaged to the, you know, to the greatest degree possible.
Okay.
And I think if the water element becomes too passive, then it just becomes sort of overlooked and, and less relevant.
Right. Do you have views of the opposite side, the opposite corner, the Arch Street side?
Yes. Actually, if you could...
Not right, but I have a plan.
Yeah, we have the plan view of that.
Close enough. I can read a plan.
Hi, look, Grand Grange.
Well, Nick, can I ask one question while we're on the side before we move? What's the seasonality of that feature going to be? Obviously, is it going to run all year now?
Uh, no, but that's, that, that question begins to get into the materials of the fountain and what is that, you know, it's, it's not really so much a waterfall as it's being conceived right now. It's, it's more of a slope surface, so the water sheets down it as opposed to just a free drop. So that gives the opportunity for the surface that the water comes down to be something. The degree of, of the presence of whatever that is when the water is on is, it could be controlled. Say, for example, the surface were, was different, was random sizes of squares and rectangles that could vary in, in dimension as they, as they either recede or protrude. So as water falls over that, those shapes become part of the whole water element. And then when there's no water there, there's still a dynamic, you know, arrangement of, of material that, that looks like something more than a fountain that's not on. So on the, on the Arch Street side is, which is here, we, what we're, what we're proposing to do there is, and you see it with, with, represented by these five circles, is more of a canopy tree. These are tulip trees, which, which have a large scale, and, and they do well in urban conditions. And by large scale, they're, they're taller than they are wide. And, and one of the reasons for selecting that is because of, of, of the, not only the proposed building here, but also the scale of the intersection and then the height of, of the building that's on the opposite corner. So there, there are lots of elements in there that are, that are large, and what's, what's planted there today are two red bud trees, which are fantastic trees.
But...
But the scale is, is not quite what these trees would offer.
I have, I have great regret about the plant, the intensive planting of red buds by the town. I don't know what possessed us, but go ahead.
Other towns, it's been cherry trees, you know, and these, these things that, that wind up happening. But then on the ground, on the, the ground plane below and, and around those trees is a mixture of shrubs and perennials and grasses. So you get, as you drive up and down or walk up and down around that intersection, you'll see a seasonality to it that, that's on eye level and, and it changes as you move through the season.
But again, this is an opportunity to connect at the street level, you know, through the station to the opposite side. I know the property owners spend a lot of time actually trying to re-landscape the planted areas against the garage, around the, around the generator, that kind of thing, even to the back of the building. And again, it'd be, it'd be great to see having this corner connect through materials, landscaping, everything to really kind of draw both sides of the, the railroad together.
Connect through to, I don't understand.
Continuity, to provide continuity between the two sides.
Okay, so we could do that...
Yeah, the, the north side and the south side.
Yeah, continuity.
Okay, so we could do that. The materials that would, they both would have in common, obviously, would be the plan materials. So one, that's one way to do it.
Right, right.
And the art that eventually might go in the underpass, overpass, whatever. Okay.
Okay.
Peter Levy, did you have any comments?
Yes.
Sorry. Did you have something?
I have more, but go ahead.
Oh, why don't you finish up?
Yeah, finish.
Uh, okay. Movie's out. I'm walking around. Tell me about lighting around the site.
Lighting, the, well, today, there, the, the lighting exists by building-mounted fixtures that, that shine on the sidewalk along the edge. The lighting that would be introduced as part of this project would be similar lighting to what comes down Greenwich Avenue. So the, it's the lights that have the hanging baskets on it.
Streetlights.
Streetlights.
Okay.
So those would occur, there's a, that's, that's an example of, of what we're showing to, to represent what's similar or what is on Greenwich Avenue. As I, as I mentioned, there's a master plan, I believe, underway for Greenwich Avenue that maybe they select a different fixture, I'm, I'm not sure, but, but it probably would be a, a version of something like that.
And that would actually carry through to the park?
It starts on, on Steamboat and goes across the, the front of the property to Arch Street.
In, in the, in the park, I would assume?
Oh, the park.
Low-level lighting?
There's a different kind of lighting that would be necessary in the park. Oftentimes, with an element that's a vertical element, like, like the, like the water wall, if you light that in a way, the reflections of that are very interesting. So, so that's one way to light the park, is to use reflective light off of an element like that.
Okay.
And the other would be, because of the rhythm of trees that we have in the park, you could introduce a fixture, a, you know, a taller fixture between the trees that would illuminate the ground area.
Very good, great, thank you.
Okay, Peter.
Yes, thank you. So I'd like to go back to the, the overview of the, the park with the waterfall.
Closer end, one of that.
To me, there's basically two zones here. There's the entrance to the food court, and then there's the back end of the, the park, which is, gives you access to the stairs. And I think that it could be a very nice space, especially because you have a one-story building next to it and that would give a lot of light and air. And, and it's, you still have a green edge on either side and, and the water element at the end. There is an issue with the waterfall, given the climate and the limitations of having it all year, can't have it all year round. The maintenance of it is, is a, is another issue. Outdoor waterfalls, I've, have experience with my properties and over time, they don't do well. And I think that wall could be part of an art installation and be very successful. You could have a much more, a much different kind of water element, which is more participatory, and it could be more in that back end and the central, maybe in the center of that, the back end of the park, that activates that area with using that wall as another, a platform for art, maybe, would be another way of looking at it. I just, to me, I'm worried about having a big element like that that, you know, is limited by the weather as far as how, how it can be used and, and then go dormant. I, I think it's unfortunate, so how, I think there's other ways of doing it, and that would be my preference. But the idea of, of any kind of water element is, is completely appreciated because it, it does activate a space. And one of the problems is that I, I think that the, the trains are loud and it is a pretty active area and there's a lot of noise, and I think this noise of the, of the water is, would be mitigated by everything around it, especially the trains. So I don't know if that's quite an important aspect of the water. But you're, I, I don't know how much sound will ultimately come out of it since you're trying to do something which is, may lessen the, the noise of it, because you want to do something which is more gentle in nature so that it has more character when it's not being used. But the, the having, the participation fountain idea is something that I've seen in many towns and is a tremendously popular feature that we don't have in Greenwich. And this seems like a, a reasonable place to put it, and becomes a draw in and of itself, and attracts families and things like that. I would love it if this park were integrated more into the rest of the scheme. I think if you did it at the other end well, the other way is just a nice way of balancing, you know, you come, when you come to this new development and you, you're, your first, you, you first come to these corners, which are parks, that's a nice way of, of keying into where you are, and it becomes a nice feature of this new development, these corner parks. I think that can, you know, it sounds very nice. So I applaud everything that you've done. I hope that the, that the water element is, works no matter what you do. If it's, if it is a, the waterfall, if, if it can be designed to work, but my experience with waterfalls in the past is, they don't work, especially over time, because they, the weather has a way of making them maintenance problems, and they just don't function all year round. But the, and, and the, the food court has this tremendous asset in front of it, and it would be just nice if there was some way of creating, having this asset more accessible to other features of the, of the, of the other uses of the, of the development. But one of the things that it, it does do is it makes more of a statement about entering the platform at the corners. And Mr. McCray and others have talked about, should it be covered? And, I mean, it sounds like a good idea to have some kind of covering on it, just to make it a little safer and more, maybe more inviting, or, because I, I go up those stairs five times a week, and even in, in, in bad weather, they're, they're not so comfortable. Maybe, maybe if they were covered somehow, maybe that would be a very nice feature. Just something to consider. But thank you.
Certainly. And if I could, just as a frame of reference on the water, of, of experiencing water the way that we're suggesting it here, there's a park in New York City called Paley Park that, that is really a water feature with some, with a seating area around it. It was built in, I think, the 1960s. It's probably one of the most visited parks in New York City, and, and I know that the city parks department considers it one of their largest assets. So...
Because it's funny that you say that, because when I first saw this at the first meeting, I thought of Paley Park. It's very, it's a funny thing.
It's a use, I mean, it's, it's a park that personally I've been drawn to...
Yeah.
My adult life.
Yeah.
And, and largely because of the water.
Yeah.
And you can, you can, you can take, you can take five steps off the sidewalk and be in a different world.
And you're in a different world. Yeah.
The difference between that park and this park is that that park has two, has buildings on both sides.
Right.
So, so it's confined in a, in a different way.
Mm-hmm.
But the scale of that water feature is such that, that it serves as a backdrop for the park when it's not on. When you look at that, when you look from the street into that park, when the, the fountain is not on, all the trees that are in there are silhouetted against that, that sort of canvas, if you want. So it becomes its own sort of composition. So there are ways to, you know, the lighting needs to be taken into consideration, whether it's a water feature on that back area or not. We still have the vertical to deal with. And on top of that, the educational component of the fact that we're harvesting roof water to supply this water is, is something that, that is a story that should be told. So you, you might not, you could certainly walk up and, and interact with the water, but intellectually, there's an engagement there that doesn't exist in, in not, in every opportunity.
All right. Okay. I think we're questioned out. Mr. Cohen? Couple of things. I think that one of the things that you heard from us in the discussion on the park is that if this is the public benefit and we're not able to do a performing arts or a cultural space, that in general, it's getting support for what it does provide. So it, it seems that the, my fellow commissioners are accepting the, the concepts behind it. The biggest issue that, new issue that's come up tonight were the comments from the public where we're going to have to drill down into all the parking assumptions. I believe that it's more important to get the overall design of the building nailed down first, the amenities it has, and then worry about the signage, the parking, and the lighting. I know parking is a critical component, but I feel like you need an overall scope first. Does that seem right? Okay.
Well, that's exactly why we filed a preliminary application to get your overall conceptual reaction.
Yep.
And, and with our, assuming the, the concept passes muster, with the comments that we've heard tonight, we move forward with our final and hopefully come up with, with the answers to a lot of the detailed questions like lighting and signage and final issues relating to the drop-off pickup facilities. But overall, you know, I, we learned a lot tonight and we appreciate your input.
What I don't know what to do with, so I'm going to just ask everybody. Hopefully, they'll answer promptly. And the ARC issue, I believe that people want to see some redesign before it goes to ARC.
Yes.
That to inti-integrate the, what you're hearing in terms of the design of the building, the massing and the fenestration that they were complaining about yesterday, but the bulkiness, I do think we've got to drill down into the parking because of these comments that came up. I know you have successfully worked with neighbor groups in the past. It may be that if you share some of Mr. Canning's information and can work with the concerned neighbors, that we may be able to alleviate the concerns about parking. Because on an IT basis, it should work as far as I remember from July, and I did not spend time on it this time, but...
Remember too, that the DPW has, has reviewed the traffic study and report and has conceptually approved it.
And Beta as well didn't really have major comments. More important, I mean, from a pure parking professional point of view, Beta didn't have any significant issues. They had comments, but they didn't really relate to sufficiency of parking in the future, at least as I'm recalling it right now. Pat, is that right?
Yeah.
Their, their comments from July, I think, is their letter.
We haven't seen the response.
They haven't responded to the pickup-dropoff change, but what, I did look over again at what they sent us last time, so I actually, but I think we're going to have to look at it again.
I think the more importantly, what you're saying is, the methodology seems to be correct and on point, that they're not arguing with any of that, those types of things. It's, it's, you know, the numbers match.
Are your, is your client willing to conceptual, give us some sort of direction on the, the look of the building?
Oh, sure.
By, I mean, because we didn't get...
We heard, we heard your comments and...
But for the next meeting, could we move real forward on that a lot?
Within the...
That's a technical term.
Within the limits of a theater operation, we certainly will try. I mean, clearly, the big issue...
And I know Mr. Harvey committed to getting that answer.
Has to do with the mass and, as you say, the fenestration, which I know has something to do with windows, but...
Because you took Latin, too.
We, we will certainly take a look at it, and we'll take a look at the, Mr. McCray's idea of splitting the theater up, but that very much is a bowtie issue. It's an operational issue. If it's possible, we'll tell you so. If it's not, we'll come back and tell you why it's not possible and really leave it to you as to whether or not the theater should continue.
And then we're going to feed back to you, and if you could feed that back through staff, it'll probably be a little more effective in terms of, and then Katie can...
Sure.
The other thing is, we'll feed back to you through staff, comments on the, on the zone, the purposes of the zone, and the setup of the zone. We'll, we'll get some points in from each commissioner on that.
That would be very helpful, yeah.
And feed that into you. Mr. Lo?
In addition to that, from bowtie, we, it would probably be helpful, given what we've heard tonight, to get any data they have concerning their anticipated volume and anticipate, and therefore anticipated effect on parking, et cetera. I think that input...
We'll, we'll follow up on that, too.
Okay.
I've got one suggestion, because it just seems to me that bowtie or nationwide theater organization would have some data that shows what the ancillary benefits of a theater are to surrounding restaurants, both with and without, you know, the deluxe treatment. Because I, it, it just seems intuitive to me, and I've argued that having a vibrant theater is great for downtown, but data is always helpful to convince...
That's a great...
Those neighbors who are concerned.
Great idea, David. That's a super idea, because I, I'm wondering if they're seeing it as a threat, it sounds like they're seeing it as a threat to their business, whereas the thing is, what's the experience of theaters? Great idea. What is the Avon's experience been? I mean, the Avon's been a superior boost to that whole neighborhood.
But I, I want to make sure that we, that encourage you rather to look into the comparative study of the standard, you know, seating plus the deluxe seating.
There must be some industry information available.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll take a look.
I'm not sure everybody wants to eat in their seat.
Well, and what, and I was going to say, and what the demographics are there, are, which audience are they hoping to attract in there? It may not be the same audience that wants to go to Mediterranean and then go to a movie. They may not want to sit there with a, eating whatever they're eating at their seat. I don't know. And it may attract, one may attract millennials, the other, you know.
Yeah.
All of that data would be useful.
Yeah.
The extent that they have assumptions.
It, it's an interesting thing, because you talked the first time about that discretionary ridership that you're seeing. The business owners on the avenue are not assuming that we could get a greater inflow of business for them with an attractive station from pedestrians who have trained in. And that's something, you mentioned this huge increase in ridership that is not, what, it's, what was the word, that they didn't?
Well, we, we believe, one of the important things about this is that we agree with the POCD, which is entertainment is a focus for downtown vibrancy, and we believe that's what's going to happen here. Will it create a parking problem? You know, our, our experts say no, and so far, your experts seem to...
Agree.
Agree with that. But I, I also agree with Mr. Lo that you think that the other property owners who, from whom you heard along Greenwich Avenue would be welcoming this improvement. I'm surprised that they're not, but never know about these things. But we'll follow up and we will address the issues that you raised.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we're done?
You want to keep, you want to ask your...
Oh, I didn't think we had any.
It was the same sheet you had yesterday.
We're back Tuesday.
Yeah, that's right.
We're back here Tuesday.